Good morning, everyone. We're very pleased to have you back for the second meeting, second day, excuse me, of this EQC meeting on November 18th. And we are convening here at 9:04 to finish up our agenda. Our first item today is going to be another action item, which is the El Rapa rulemakings. And so we welcome Michael Orman and Karen Williams and Steve Dietrich for the presentation. Welcome.
George, good morning. I'll go ahead and get us started. For the record, my name is Ali Muzakai. They're called the Division Administrator for the EQ. And I'll promise you today, this is the only time you're going to hear from me. So it will not be a marathon for of my presence here. So I have with me Steve Dietrich, who's actually a DEQ alumni that just joined El Rapa and but Lain Regional Air Protection Agency has been probably predates, I think predates DEQ in terms of longevity, established in 1968 and is the only local air pollution authority here in the state of Oregon. They said they are governed by an elected board. El Rapa has a strong connection to the local community members, organization, and businesses. And we have a longstanding partnership to protect air quality in Oregon. And Steve is carrying the old tradition and being an excellent partner with us. Like the EQ, El Rapa has reporting responsibility to EPA. El Rapa submits state implementation plan materials to EPA through the EQ. So the EQ must determine that the rules and state implementation plans are as stringent as those for the state. So and that's why we're up in front of you today. So El Rapa Director Stephen Dietrich will be presenting a request to the Commission to adopt two plans to maintain compliance with particulate matter 2.5 and PM 10 standards for the Oak Ridge area. With a maintenance plan submission, El Rapa is also asking EPA to designate the Oak Ridge area as attaining the PM 2.5 or PM 10 standards. So with that, I appreciate your time and attention. And Steve.
Oh, thank you for your introduction. Ali, yes, I am a transplant from DEQ and good to be here in new capacity since April. And thanks for the history lesson on El Rapa. Yes, we've been around a long time as well. Today, I want to, and Chair George and Commissioners, some of you have met in the past as well and continue to look forward to relationship in the future. Today, I will describe Oak Ridge's non-attainment status. The work being done in the community to improve air quality, how the maintenance plans will be implemented, and what it means for the Oak Ridge-Westford communities. Next slide. El Rapa administers the air quality program in Lain County. The Oak Ridge-Westford airshed is in Lain County about 45 miles southeast of the Eugene-Springfield metro area. About 3,500 people live in the airshed. Wood smoke can degrade air quality in Oak Ridge-Westford on the worst winter days, which happens during prolonged periods of air stagnation. Next slide. So El Rapa is responsible for implementing Clean Air Act in Lain County. As you know, the federal Clean Air Act regulates six criteria pollutants by setting standards for each, referred to as the National Ambient Air Quality Standards or NAX. The Oak Ridge-Westford airshed in Lain County is currently designated as non-attainment for particulate matter, both for PM 2.5 and PM 10 particle pollution. Can you advance the graphic, please? This occurs following US EPA's adoption of more protective PM 2.5 standards in 2006 and designated the Oak Ridge-Westford as non-attainment in 2009. Since then, El Rapa, local stakeholders, and the Oak Ridge-Westford community have worked very hard to improve air quality. In 2016, the airshed met the 24-hour standard based on a three-year average of the 98th percentile, which was recognized by the US EPA in 2018. El Rapa has completed a formal request to re-designate Oak Ridge-Westford airshed into attainment and adopted the corresponded maintenance plans to assure the National Ambient Air Quality Standards are maintained. El Rapa's Board of Directors recently approved the re-designation request and maintenance plan at their October 2021 meeting. Today, we're seeking approval by the Environmental Quality Commission to adopt the designation change and maintenance plans. Following this step, the EPA will review, go out for public comment, and ideally approve and publish the change in the Federal Register in 2022. Next slide. So what has happened to allow this re-designation? Air quality has gradually improved in the Oak Ridge-Westford airshed over the last decade. The graph to the left shows the current 24-hour PM 2.5 standard established by the EPA, illustrated here with the horizontal red dashed line. You can see the improving trend in Oak Ridge-Westford's air quality as shown by the blue line. The airshed has remained below the EPA standard for the last six years. The table on the right summarizes the 2015 base year emissions inventory used within the maintenance plans to quantify emission reduction achieved within the airshed. As you can see, the largest contributor of particulate matter pollution in the airshed is the residential wood combustion from wood stoves and home fireplaces. Residential wood combustion from home wood heating accounts for over 84% of PM 2.5 pollution in the airshed. This is due to the surrounding topography in Oak Ridge, which makes it easy for air to become trapped over the community, sometimes for many days. Oak Ridge doesn't have access to natural gas as a form of heating. Electricity for heat is expensive and less reliable in the winter when it snows. As a result, the community relies heavily on wood combustion for heat. Next slide, please. Therefore, efforts to improve air quality in the airshed have focused primarily on home wood heating interventions and alterations. Efforts to improve the air quality can be broken down into three categories. The first is from permanent improvements. It includes installing ductless heat pumps, replacing uncertified wood stoves with a new and more efficient version, and weatherizing homes to better retain heat. These combined efforts provide lasting improvements by permanently removing emissions from the airshed. Ductless electric heat pumps provide a secondary form of heating, removing 100% of the emissions released to heat a home as compared with wood combustion. Next, replacing older stoves with more efficient EPA-certified wood stove reduces emissions, which would have been created with a less efficient device. And finally, home weatherization provides home upgrades and improvements which help homes retain heat better. This reduces the need to light a fire for heat, limiting the amount of particulate matter pollution introduced into the wood shed. Airshed, excuse me. Next slide, please. The second category of air quality improvements, the efforts that is going on, is operational and ongoing efforts. These efforts include a community firewood program, public education, and setting limits on smoke opacity in the airshed. These emission reduction efforts have been vital in ensuring the airshed quality continues to improve. The community firewood program provided discounted and affordable wood to the community. This wood has been sourced locally from the Willamette National Forest and is properly seasoned and dried. Increasing access to adequately dried wood in the community generally reduces particulate matter pollution across the airshed. Public education is designed to identify air quality problems in the community and highlight individual efforts the Oak Ridge-Westford residents can make to help improve air quality. This education includes detailing health consequences of particulate matter pollution as well as proper burning techniques to assure wood stove fire is polluting as minimally as possible. Lastly, is the ongoing effort to reduce PM pollution in Oak Ridge by setting and enforcing a lower limit on the opacity of smoke in the airshed. Opacity is a good indicator of operating practice. Setting a lower opacity threshold in term reduces how much particulate pollution is created from a single source, in this case, wood stoves in each residence. Next slide, please. The final category of air quality improvement efforts is episodic interventions. There are additional efforts triggered on poor air quality days. The efforts are primarily curtailing wood stoves used in the wintertime with attention given to protecting community health by distributing high-efficiency particulate-absorbing, or HEPA, air filters to be used inside the home. The use of HEPA air filters in the homes is also beneficial during wildfire season. During wood stove curtailment events, El Rapa implements a green, yellow, red advisory program. No wood stove curtailment is required on green home wood heating days. On yellow days, the community is encouraged to voluntarily refrain from using their wood stove. On red days, wood stove use is prohibited by anyone without a pre-established exemption, for example, economic need or sole source of heat. Providing the community with HEPA filters hasn't resulted in any direct ambient particulate matter reduction. However, for the inside home use, the effort has been well received by the community and has helped protect public health during poor air quality days, often exacerbated by wintertime home wood heating devices and also during smoke intrusions from wildfires. Next slide, please. The maintenance plans for consideration today describe in detail how El Rapa will assure the National Ambient Air Quality Standards will be maintained for PM 2.5 and PM 10. There are three main parts to the plan. First, El Rapa commits to continue ambient air monitoring at Oak Ridge. El Rapa will continue operating our PM 2.5 monitoring network as outlined in the Ambient Air Monitoring Network Plan. Any modifications to this network will be done in consultation with Oregon DEQ and EPA Region 10. Second, El Rapa will continue verification of maintenance standards. El Rapa will provide quality-assured data to DEQ to verify compliance with the NAX. And El Rapa will review air monitoring results to determine if contingency measures need to be implemented. And lastly, is the contingency plan used in case air quality standards are violated. El Rapa commits to implement the contingency plan when needed. The plan includes a stricter curtailment program, which could create more instances when wood stove use is prohibited. Next slide, please. So in preparation for this rulemaking process, El Rapa discussed the maintenance plans with El Rapa's Citizen Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee was presented these maintenance plans at their March 30th, 2021 meeting. The committee includes representatives across Lain County from industry, agriculture, public health, and the general public. The committee did not make any new recommendations to El Rapa. Next slide. Public notice for this rulemaking was advertised on August 1st, 2021. The list shown represents where public notice was given, using direct email notification to interested stakeholders, as well as public bulletins, public websites, and publication in local newspapers. Next slide. A public hearing for this rulemaking took place on September 9th, 2021 during El Rapa's September Board of Directors meeting. No oral testimony or written comments were received at the hearing. Prior to the hearing, El Rapa was authorized as hearing officer for the public comment process of adopting these proposed plans on behalf of the Environmental Quality Commission. And DEQ determined these maintenance plans to be at least as stringent as DEQ's requirements. Next slide. During the public comment period on this rulemaking, El Rapa received two written comments, one from DEQ and a second from EPA. As a result, El Rapa modified the maintenance plan to address these comments received from both DEQ and EPA. Next slide. No fiscal impacts are expected at Oak Ridge and Westford on large or small businesses in the area. No large business operates within the airshed, and only a single minor permitted source exists in the airshed. We do not anticipate a significant fiscal or economic impact on any business. The public may see some fiscal impacts as a result of increased heating costs as alternative forms of heat are available to the community and wood stove curtailment continues during poor air quality days. Secondary forms of heat such as electricity generally have a higher expense than wood burning. However, these costs vary depending on the alternative heat source and the number of curtailment days declared each winter, as well as the cost to purchase and transport cordwood. Next slide, please. The adoption of the proposed rulemaking and maintenance plans are expected to have public benefit for improved air quality. Both PM 2.5 and PM 10 pollution can have negative health impacts on those exposed. Particulate matter pollution is attributed to an increase in hospitalization and emergency room visits. Next slide. The adoption of this rulemaking and maintenance plans will help assure a reduction in particulate pollution in the airshed. Less particulate matter pollution should decrease medical complications associated with PM exposure and lower the number of hospitalizations and emergency room visits in the community. The savings from reduced medical costs could help offset any increased costs in alternative heating during the winter. Next slide. And I think that's my last slide, and I'll pause there before presenting recommendations for questions.
Any comments or questions about our presentation? And I don't have, oh, there we go. Vice Chair Barasso.
Thank you, Chair George. I just wanted to appreciate, you know, and acknowledge that it's taken a good bit of work for El Rapa to get into this attainment, and I'm glad to see that it's shifting into this maintenance plan. So having been new to this issue as I came onto the ETC and being briefed and learning about the long, you know, the efforts that have been taking place in Lain County around this issue for a while, it's good. And it's good to see that it shifted to this place. So just appreciate seeing that and appreciating the good efforts to bring, to keep Lain County in attainment with the PM 2.5 and PM 10 standards.
Commissioner Kyle.
I was gonna echo the same thing. Steve, that was a great presentation, and it's really nice to see that these interventions, which are very feasible, actually solve the problem in that area of attainment. So I think this is a real success for Oregon.
Chair George, Commissioners, thank you for those encouraging words, and the effort does continue. It's never something that you can stop once you go down this road, but we're making great progress, and it's good to hear your your approval of our efforts. So without any more questions, on El Rapa's behalf, DEQ recommends that the Oregon Environmental Quality Commission approve the rule revision seating attachments B and C to re-designate the Oak Ridge-Westford airshed as attainment for the National Air Quality Health Standards for fine particulates PM 2.5 and include a 10-year maintenance plan to keep air quality within the PM 2.5 health standards and re-designate the Oak Ridge-Westford as attainment for the 24-hour National Ambient Air Quality Standards for coarse inhalable particulates and include a 10-year maintenance plan to keep air quality within the PM 10 health standards. Approve incorporating these rules amendments into the Oregon State Air Act State Implementation Plan under OAR 340-200-0040 and direct DEQ to submit Oak Ridge-Westford PM 2.5 re-designation request and maintenance plan and the Oak Ridge PM 10 re-designation request and maintenance plan the City of Oak Ridge ordinance number 920 and Lain County code 9.120-150 to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for approval.
Well said. That's quite a recommendation. Unless we require further discussion, I will entertain a motion to this effect. Vice Chair Barasso.
Can I say so moved? Or do I, and Gary, this may be a place, or should I read the recommendation?
Yeah, but hi, this is Gary Bruman, ETC Council. I think you could probably say so moved, but it has been DEQ's practice or the EQC's practice, I believe, to read the motions. So I will defer to the chair on what she wants to do here, but the motion was just read into the record, so it's there for people to.
All right. Well, with that tolerance, we will accept so moved. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Excellent. The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. With none opposed, the motion carries. Thank you so much, and thank you for this good work that continues to help protect our air and all the people who are impacted. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. And now we have an informational update about the Clean Fuels Program update. We'll welcome Colin McConaughey and Corianne Wind.
Chair George.
Director.
Yeah. Good morning, everybody. For the record, Richard Whitman, DEQ Director. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, but Chair George, I'm wondering about recognizing our new EQC Commissioners and bringing them into the meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Director. I was remiss here. I'm so excited to hear about the Clean Fuels Program update that I just couldn't resist. But I too want to welcome our one Commissioner back and one Commissioner to the table. Welcome. We're so happy to have you with us. Amy Slusher and Greg Addington. Is Greg on? I know he had a conflict for a little while this morning.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George. I don't see Greg on at the moment, but I think he'll probably join us here shortly. But let me, if you don't mind, Chair George, have the honor of introducing two, our two new Commissioners. And first of all, Amy Slusher is, was nominated by Oregon Governor Brown and was confirmed by the Oregon State Senate yesterday. And Amy is a staff attorney at the Green Energy Institute and has a ton of expertise on environmental law, particularly in the air quality and climate arenas. And I'm very excited to have her join the Commission and along with Greg Addington. And let me just say a word about Greg. Here, Greg is well-known to our Commissioners, having been on the EQC for several years. We lost Greg for about a year while he was working for the Oregon Legislature. But again, he was nominated by Governor Brown this fall and confirmed yesterday by the Oregon Senate. Greg runs Addington Consulting and also runs the REO program, the Resource Education and Agricultural Leadership Program, which is a program for current and emerging natural resource industry leaders here in Oregon. And I've had the pleasure of, along with other state agency directors and actually federal executives, being part of that program for educating people about how our natural resource systems work here in Oregon. So it's a pleasure to have Greg back. It's a real pleasure to have Amy Slusher join us. Good morning. And our two new Commissioners need to go through some paperwork before they participate in any formal action of the Environmental Quality Commission. But we thought it would be good to bring them on this morning and have them participate in the informational items just as part of what will be a little bit more thorough onboarding that we do with them over the coming weeks. So with that, I'll pause. Amy, I don't know if you wanted to say anything or not, but this would be a good time if you do.
Great. Thank you, Director Whitman. Hi, Chair George, Commissioner Kyle, and Commissioner, Vice Chair Barasso. I'm so excited to get started working with all of you. I'm really thrilled to be part of the Commission. I know there's a lot of work to do, and I'm just really excited to get to work.
Thank you. We are so pleased to have you onboard, and it's going to be a fantastic fit with your background and experience to contribute to all the kind of variety of backgrounds that we have at the table. So thank you so much for being willing to serve. It is no small thing for people who serve on these boards and commissions. It does take a great deal of dedication and some hard work and a great deal of time. And the EQC in particular, being a regulatory body, as well as one that works in on policy issues with DEQ, we really do appreciate your dedication to the state and to the people and to our resources. And we really look forward to having your voice at the table and Greg's as well. It will be great fun to have Greg back at the table and all the insight that he brings us as well. The other thing just to mention now, and we will not spend time on this here, but having a full Commission again is a great thing. But it will also, once the new Commissioners, new and returning Commissioners have had an opportunity to kind of get oriented and reoriented, it will be good for the EQC to talk about our various kinds of roles that we serve on. We have always had an agricultural liaison, a timber liaison. Commissioner Kyle currently serves as the OWEB representative, which is a seat that the EQC has. She's done an amazing job representing us there. But again, it's another, it's another contribution of time and effort and commitment. And it's worth acknowledging that everybody on this commitment has other full-time jobs, which is not always necessarily the case on every board and commission. So ah, speak of Commissioner Addington. Welcome, Greg. Welcome, Commissioner Addington. We're so glad to have you back.
Thank you, Chair George, and my fellow Commissioners. It's very, very good to be back. Very good to see you all. You're all looking very good. And weren't you surprised to see me back?
Ah, you couldn't stay away, Commissioner Addington. It's so good to have you back. And we were just talking about how once you guys are up to speed, which, you know, will take no time at all, we'll have to reevaluate some of these things. Commissioner Kyle has also been serving on, I think, the Internal Audit Committee at DEQ. You know, again, this new audit function within DEQ, and we're really excited about, really support. But again, it's a commitment. So we'll let you guys get oriented, and then we'll need to discuss those things. There's always plenty to do on the EQC. So beyond that, Commissioner Addington, we were just doing some introductions. If there's anything else you'd like to share, we'd certainly welcome that, but we know that there'll be plenty of time to chat as we move forward.
Thank you. I think you all and most people here have heard from me enough in the past. So I'm ready to start absorbing information again.
Yeah, great. You're ready for the deluge to come again. Well, that's good to hear. All right. Well, Director, anything else on that front, or shall we move forward with the Clean Fuels?
Thank you, Chair George. Just again, a little bit of intro for the next part of the agenda. We have two information items coming before you this morning. One on the work that's going on in the Oregon Clean Fuels Program, the success that we've had with the program already, and where we're headed in the future with that program, which will be a rulemaking that will come to you all next year. And then we also have an informational item on work going on in the Climate Protection Program that will be coming before you, middle of next month on December 16, with proposed rules. And we are bringing these two items today to, again, keep the Commission up to date on the important work that's going on in the agency around reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The two programs are related. The Clean Fuels The Clean Fuels Program is a very important part of how we get to the greenhouse gas reductions that we are working toward in the Climate Protection Program. So as you hear the presentation, the next presentation on the Clean Fuels Program, keep in mind that, that it is part of how we will transition under the Climate Protection Program to reducing amount of fossil fuels that we use in Oregon. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Colin McConaughey, who's the Program Manager for our climate programs, and Corianne Wind, who is the lead on the Clean Fuels Program. Take it away.
Great, thank you, Director Whitman. Good morning, Chair George, members of the Commission. My name is Colin McConaughey, I manage DEQ's Office of Greenhouse Gas Programs. There she is, and with me, yeah, this morning is Corianne Wind, as Director Whitman mentioned. Cory manages our Clean Fuels Program. And we're here this morning for a couple of reasons that Director Whitman just outlined. First, we're going to provide a update on the Clean Fuels Program, just a brief reminder of how the program is working currently and some exciting successes we've had in the program in recent years. And then, secondly, Cory will provide a, or summarize some modeling that we commissioned recently to study how the program might extend and expand past the currently adopted target of a 10% reduction in carbon intensity of Oregon's transportation fuels by 2025. We're not ready yet this morning to dive into the future rulemaking, but we're, we're about to start to support proposal of that program expansion. But we are ready to share some of the, those results of the, of the analysis that we commissioned to help inform that rulemaking process that we're, that is just about to get underway. And then the interesting time, I'm just going to hand it right over to Corianne Wind to pick up the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Colin. So good morning, Chair George, Vice Chair Barasso and Commissioner Kyle and Commissioners Addington and, and Schlesser. So for the record, my name is Corianne Wind and I manage the Clean Fuels Program here at DEQ. So thank you for this opportunity to provide you with this update of the very many exciting things that are going on in the Clean Fuels Program these days. So, next slide, please. So first, I'm going to start with a high-level overview of progress that the Clean Fuels Program has made over the first five years of this program since our start in 2016. So as you know, the goal of the Clean Fuels Program is to reduce the carbon intensity of Oregon's transportation fuels. And I'm pleased to report that nearly 6 million tons of greenhouse gas emissions have been avoided by switching to lower carbon transportation fuels. So this has been accomplished by transitioning to more biofuels like ethanol, biodiesel and renewable diesel, by switching to renewable forms of natural gas and propane, and by converting internal combustion engines to electric vehicle technology. This has resulted in over 1 billion gallons of gasoline and diesel that have been displaced over the first five years of the program. And in each year, the amount of biofuels that are blended have increased, especially in the diesel pool where about 12% of that volume comes from renewable feedstocks compared to 5% in 2015. In addition, the biofuels are getting cleaner, with the carbon intensities decreasing by about 20% since 2015. This transition not only reduces greenhouse gas emissions, but also tailpipe emissions of criteria and toxic air pollutants. And with the number of electric vehicles growing rapidly as a result of ZEM regulations like the one that you adopted yesterday, and incentives like the Oregon Clean Fuel of Vehicle Revenues, even more and more gasoline and diesel will be displaced in the future. The Clean Fuels Program also allows our state's electricity utilities to receive clean fuel credits on behalf of the EV-only residential customers. And they in turn have invested about $20 million in clean fuels credit revenue into projects to promote additional transportation electrification. So for Portland General Electric customers, these are the Drive Change Fund grants. And for Pacificor customers, these are the Electric Mobility Grants that are funded dozens of community projects to purchase a variety of electric vehicles and chargers and Oregon's first electric school buses. Smaller consumer-owned utilities such as Central Linkin, Columbia River, Emerald and Tullamook PUDs, and the Oregon Trail Electric Co-op have also installed dozens of chargers in many rural parts of the states to ensure that the network of public charging be available to support the increasing numbers of EVs in the future. Other cities, other entities like the City of Ashland and the Eugene Water and Electric Board have also developed comprehensive climate plans where EV incentives play a significant role in meeting their targets. And they have implemented a wide variety of incentives to do so. Most recently, CFP revenue is being used to fund a statewide media campaign called Org Go In Electric. That is the result of a multi-stakeholder Oregon Solutions Process called the Oregon EV Collaborative. And lastly, I'd like to point out that revenue from selling clean fuels credits can also be used as a valuable match to federal dollars in situations like the Diesel Emission Reductions Act and in those upcoming in the federal infrastructure packages. Next slide. So what I wanted to do here is to present you with just several snapshots of how cleaner fuels are being used in various applications throughout the state. So I think the most obvious kind of picture is the example of the electric vehicle in the lower right area that is shown, that's actually my son that's plugging in my Nissan Leaf. I've delegated that, that job to my kids when, when it's time to charge. But, but you know, after that, I mean, I think that's, that's the typical case that we, we talk about electric vehicles these days. But you know, what you see is a large variety of other kinds of fuel applications in use. What you'll see is transit buses that run on renewable natural gas and electricity. You'll see garbage trucks that run on renewable natural gas. You'll see light rail, streetcars and aerial trams that also run on electricity. Delivery vans that run on propane. You'll see Class 8 tractor trailers that is running on 199% renewable diesel. Forklifts that run on propane electric, electricity, and most recently hydrogen. Airport ground service equipment, ag tractors, cargo handling equipment, and a variety of new heavy-duty off-road applications that are electrified. And last but not least, you'll also see a picture of an airline that is, that can run up to 50% blends of sustainable aviation fuel. This has been, all of these applications and uses exist in Oregon right now. And that there has been a quick wrap-up of all of these different kinds of fuels and applications. And honestly, we need all of them as we move forward to decarbonize the transportation sector. Next slide. I also wanted to take this opportunity to show you some examples of clean fuels that are being produced in state. So these include ethanol being made in Boardman, biodiesel that's being made in Salem, renewable natural gas that is being made in Portland from municipal wastewater, in Boardman from dairy manure, and a new one that didn't even make it onto this map, but there's a new project down in the Junction City area that is using digester with green waste and agricultural waste to produce renewable natural gas as well. There are also several projects that are in various stages of planning and permitting and construction that include two renewable diesel facilities in Klebskanae, a sustainable aviation facility outside of Lakeview, a renewable hydrogen facility being planned in Eugene, and, and many, many more that, again, are not on this map yet because they're still in the rumor mill stage. But there's done, there's a definite uptick in the stories that I'm hearing about project developers looking for sites to develop projects in, in Oregon. And I'd also like to point out that as the demand for these clean fuels has led to large investments in the related fueling infrastructure that goes along with these, delivering the new fuels. In some cases, the new fuels are dropping, so you don't need any infrastructure changes. But in many cases, there are infrastructure and it needs to be in place. And so, for example, this is an updated number for the number of EV chargers. Most recently, there's about 2,400 chargers that are already registered in the state of Oregon. And they register with the Clean Fuels Programs because then they generate credits from that infrastructure so that they can offset their capital costs and, and install even more. And, and these chargers are largely privately owned. And it's the market being able to support this, you know, this massive increase in electric vehicles that are becoming to the statement of the future. There's also a couple dozen of natural gas, CNG and propane dispensers as well, that increasingly, if this infrastructure is in place, then it can enable renewable natural gas and renewable propane to be further provided into the, into the market. Okay, next slide.
Vice Chair Barasso.
Thank you, and, and appreciate getting this update here. I just wanted to know with the number that you just spoke to Corianne, the 2,000 EV chargers, just to give a sense, obviously, I assume when we're talking about home charging, it's, it's a significantly greater number. What's the, what describes that, that 2,000 EV chargers that are registering? Are these like businesses where, you know, it's just employees or workers in the business that get to charge there? These publicly, publicly accessible chargers? Just so I mentally have a picture of what, what that, what that's looking like.
Oh yeah, Vice Chair Barasso, great question. So I would say that the vast majority are chargers that are publicly available, right? So these are, you know, companies that are putting chargers in, in neighborhoods or on retail sites, around the major quarters where, you know, a lot of EVs are registered. So a lot of them are in the metro areas, but again, you know, investments are being made statewide to be able to, you know, attract EV tourism, for example, economic development within a lot of rural towns. So if you think about your, you know, your charger providers, you know, like a ChargePoint or like a PlugShare or like, you know, there's just several private companies that this is what they do. The large majority of those are that. And then increasing numbers of utilities that are owning infrastructure as well.
Thank you, that's helpful, appreciate it.
Commissioner Kyle.
Hi, Corianne, I'm appreciating all of this. And it's kind of a question, actually, that, that dragged me from yesterday when we were talking about the cleaner trucks. But one of the public comments was, you know, there's going to be a great need for chargers for those heavy, heavy trucks. And I'm just curious if within the Clean Fuels Program, if there's the opportunity to kind of prioritize that type of development that's going to be needed in a couple of years to, to meet that need.
Yes, Commissioner Kyle, that's, that's a great question. And so if you recall, maybe it's, it's in COVID times, it seems so long ago, but earlier this year in March, Clean Fuels actually had a rulemaking where we really focused and targeted on making changes to the Clean Fuels Program to support the acceleration of EVs. One of the things that we changed in the program was to give the opportunity for public entities that have medium and heavy-duty vehicles, an opportunity for advanced credits. So advanced credits is somewhere, is the situation where normally somebody would have to put in a charger, report to us on a quarterly basis, and then after the fact, generate credits on the amount of electricity used. But since we're in a mode now of looking to incent things like transit buses and school buses, what we've allowed is that for those fleets to come in and when they actually put that, that new bus in service, we can actually, they can apply to receive six years' worth of credits upfront, right? So instead of waiting six years to generate those credits, give them to them upfront and more like an upfront loan, right? So then you can have this big tranche of credits, sell them, use that money to then offset any kind of additional capital costs or infrastructure upgrade costs, training of your workforce, those kinds of things. And then on a quarterly basis, not generate new credits, but then pay back that loan, right? So it's just a mechanism to get more money into the hands of medium, heavy-duty fleets to be able to use the Clean Fuels Programs to kind of help that bottom line and help them move from maybe that one, that first, that first one or two pilot, you know, vehicle, you know, to get more towards fleet conversion, you know, to get dozens kinds of vehicles in the fleet. So that, that's an example of how we've tried to prioritize, you know, those kinds of applications in the Clean Fuels Program.
Commissioner Schlesser.
Hi, thank you, Corianne. I just had a follow-up question for you. Is there a, like a deadline for paying back those, those loans as you refer to them? Like do, if suppliers don't actually invest in those technologies or those technologies don't actually result in reductions in fossil fuel use, is there a deadline by which they would have to pay back the credits that they were received upfront?
Yes, Commissioner Schlesser, that, yes, that is the way that it is structured. So when, when a fleet will come in and apply for these credits, we'll enter an agreement with them that stipulates the period of time that they need to pay back the credits to us. And then if it does get to, so it's an additional, it's up to an additional three years for them to pay back those credits. We realized that, you know, it's what your best laid plans are, doesn't always, you know, come to fruition. So we did give the fleets a little extra time to pay it back. At that end of that payback period, though, if, if they don't have enough credits to pay back that loan, they are required to make it up somehow. So it could be that that fleet already has credits from, say, some other activity that they're doing or to go into the market to actually buy credits to, to offset that loan. The way that the credits work for the Clean Fuels Program, right, is the credits don't get generated until, typically until after that reduction of greenhouse gas actually occurs. And so it is a priority of the Agency to ensure that, you know, the environmental, the credibility of the program is maintained, right? We want to ensure that those reductions actually happen.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, so, so by design, the Clean Fuels Program is a market-based program that allows the fuel providers to comply with the regulation in several different cost-effective ways. So the regulated parties can generate their own credits. They can purchase them with the fuels that they are purchasing, or they can purchase credits through the market that the Agency facilitates. So in the first five years of the program, all of the program's regulated parties have complied with the standards. And there is, and, excuse me. And in the years that we've implemented the program, and so far, there is, they have actually over-complied with the standard. So there is a bank of extra credits that can be used for future compliance. The CFP market has grown to be worth approximately $200 million in the 2021 compliance year, with about $94 million worth of credits already being traded through our online system to date this year. So remember also that only California and Oregon currently have this Clean Fuel Program. Washington is going to be joining the market in 2023. But what this policy really does is act as an incentive to clean up transportation fuels. And it sends a strong signal to clean fuel producers worldwide to bring their innovative products to our markets. So even with all of the benefits that this program has brought to Oregon over the initial periods of this program, there continues, remains to be some concern about what the impact is on the price of traditional fossil fuels, so gasoline and diesel, that are still very dominant in the market these days. So we're required to, to provide this estimate. By the, the legislature requires us to do this. And so based on conservative estimates, the average cost to comply with the program in 2020 is about, between about three and five cents per gallon of gasoline or diesel. We do believe that this is a conservative estimate because this assumes that all, if to comply, a regulated party would have to buy all of their credits on the market, which is the most expensive way to do it. all if to comply, um a regulated party would have to buy all of their credits on the market, which is the most expensive way to do it. Um anecdotally, and that we can see from some just the um pricing information that we have available, um that a lot of times, the cleaner fuels are actually cheaper than the fossil fuels that they replace. So for example, B20, right, a a diesel that is mixed with um 20% biodiesel as opposed to the required 5% biodiesel. So the price of biod B20 is actually cheaper than B5. Um and so and you can see how the Clean Fuels Program has really incented um the availability of B20 in the market, and many of the large truck stops have B20 at a price that's lower than B5. And that has actually brought down the cost of fuel to many of those in the trucking industry. So, next slide. Okay, so the strength of the market will undoubtedly increase as we embark on our new rulemaking next month as um Colin and Director Whitman have um mentioned. So as you, um as you know, Governor Brown issued Executive Order 2004 last March. And among several policy directives to DQ and EQC were adjustments of the Clean Fuels Program targets and timelines. So beyond the currently adopted 10% reduction in average carbon intensity by 2025, the order's policy direction is for the EQC and DQ to take actions to expand the program to achieve reductions of at least 20% by 2030 and 25% by 2035. So we have just convened a 26-member uh rulemaking advisory committee, and our first RAC meeting is scheduled for early December. Uh we'll be meeting with the RAC through the first half of next year. Uh we have a a long and rich relationship with our many, many stakeholders, as you can imagine, because there's so many different fuels and technologies represented in the space. There are a lot of people, not only biofuels producers, but uh vehicle providers and just market uh participants um wanting to see how the program is uh is is working. Um and so we will continue to work with these stakeholders uh closely as we consider what the future standards could be and whether any modifications are needed to support achievement of them. And our plan is to bring you proposed rule changes uh to you next fall. Next slide. So uh this is a very busy slide. So what I'm gonna do is is kind of is walk you through this. Um so to inform the room making, DQ hired ICF International to develop a set of scenarios of what the full fuel and vehicle combinations could make up Oregon's fleet out in 2035. So scenarios provide us with an opportunity to explore questions like how much of the fleet will be electrified? And how much biofuels will be blended into gas and diesel? And what will those carbon intensity of those biofuels be? So in two of the scenarios, we assume that we would achieve the carbon intensity reduction targets that were outlined in the executive order. Um and then we created um uh and then we created versions where it's like high electrification or high biofuels. But what I want to show to you today is a scenario where we didn't limit those reductions that we're achieving out into the future, but rather asked what reductions were possible if we made plausible assumptions about several factors in the future. So let me uh orient you to this graph. So on the left axis are the credits and deficits that are generated in the program with a credit or deficit equalling a ton of carbon dioxide equivalent. So that's the the GHD um emissions. Each of the colored bars represent a different fuel type, starting at the bottom with ethanol, then renewable diesel, biodiesel, electricity, natural gas, and hydrogen. The red line then is represents the number of deficits that are being generated in that year from the high carbon fuels. Um right now, that would be gasoline and diesel. But as we get um longer um into farther into the future and as the standards decrease, other fossil fuels like natural gas um like propane will likely become deficit generating as well in their fossil forms. Um let's see. So how you read that is if the stacked bar in each individual year exceeds that red line, that means that more credits are being generated than the deficits, and that builds to the credit bank. I'm lost. Um that it, yeah, that it that it that it increases the credit bank and vice versa. If the red line is higher than where the stack bars is, then we're drawing down credits from the bank. So the green line is what shows the status of the bank. Um and it's really important to follow that as well because there are years that it might be difficult of to comply with the standard, but then the bank is also a resource to use um to be able to make up what that gap is. On the right axis then is the percent reductions in average carbon intensity from a 2015 baseline. And the black line indicates what reductions are possible. Okay, so the reason why I'm showing you this particular scenario, the others are also available in a in a report that's posted on our website, is because we feel that this represents a very likely set of future conditions. So for the first key point here is that we modeled the impact of both the advanced clean truck regulation that you adopted yesterday as well as the advanced clean carts two regulations that California is currently developing for light-duty vehicles out to 2035. So these will probably be consistent with the electric vehicle adoption goals that were established in Senate Bill 1044 in 2019. So we felt comfortable that including this in this scenario um um as as a key assumption. As you can see with the growing orange bars, electrification um drives credit generation beyond 2025 as the ZEV regulations really uh kick in a higher gear. And remember that not only does electricity generate a lot of credits because it is so much cleaner, but it also displaces gas and diesel, which reduces the number of deficits that are being generated in the system. Um but in addition to electricity, biofuels do continue to play a large transitional role until zero emission technologies can be developed for all um internal combustion vehicles, especially when you're talking about those in the heavy-duty and off-road uses and for marine and aviation um applications. So all told, this scenario demonstrates that approximately 37% um carbon intensity reductions are possible, far in excess of what the uh what was contained in the uh executive order. And coincidentally, uh this also translates to almost a 50% reduction in tailpipe greenhouse gas emissions from baseline levels, which is also consistent with what the state's long-term climate goals are. Okay. Next slide, please. Uh but thinking about fuels in terms of credits and carbon intensity, I know is a little hard when you're not immersed in the policy like we are uh every single day. And so what I provided you here is like another way to look at the the scenarios um that you that might make a little bit more sense for you to track. And so what this graph shows you is how gasoline and diesel consumption might look in the future um using the same set of assumptions in the previous slide. So here, the teal line at the top is gasoline consumption. And you can see between now and 2035, it's projected to decrease by about 47%. Right? So this is primarily due to electrification of the light-duty fleet. And then next, the orange line that lies below that, the orange line represents diesel consumption, which again, from now out into 2035 decreases by about 49%. Okay, so here, the reasons uh for this decline, um um there are some multiple and stacking reasons um why um of for for this decline. Um primarily, we do believe that zero emission technologies, including battery electrics and fuel cells, will displace much of the diesel consumption um in these scenarios. Um but even if ZEV deployment is delayed or doesn't meet its intended targets, it is anticipated that biodiesel and renewable diesel will be blended at very high rates, um even upwards towards 100% because the supply and the technology already exists. And the Clean Fuels pro uh credits that are associated with these fuels will make it a cheap way to comply with the with with the program. So just to give you um some context as well, um if you're looking at, say, the diesel consumption going from about 650 to about 350 million gallons um in the previous slide where I had where I talked about the different production facilities in the state. So the um one of the renewable diesel facilities uh that is proposed for um in Klotzkyni um proposes to produce 600 million gallons of renewable diesel, right? And so I think one of the issues these days is if you're talking about 650 million gallons, is the the adequate supply to actually, you know, um completely replace fossil diesel with a renewable diesel. Um and you know, at this point of time, there is um um there is a shortage in the amount of renewable diesel that's just widely available to the market. But if you're looking out into the future and as diesel consumption continues to decline, then and as this additional production facilities come online as well, right? You can see how it's just more feasible that um higher, greater and greater amounts of fossil diesel will be replaced. And if this these conditions hold true, then that orange line uh might potentially just go away entirely. It could be entirely replaced by a renewable product. Um lastly, you know what I don't have for you quite yet? Um and stay tuned for maybe a a future update, maybe in um at the um early next year, um are the results of a study that we are working on that will take these uh 2035 scenario and then estimate the reductions in tailpipe emissions and their associated health benefits, right? So as you can imagine, uh this deep reduction in gasoline and diesel combustion should have massive local air quality benefits, um especially in many of the environmental justice communities that are situated near roadways and transportation hubs. So as I said earlier in my presentation, um the future looks really bright for Oregon's transportation fuels. Um the Clean Fuels Program has proven to be instrumental in taking those necessary first steps to decarbonize this very, very tough uh sector um to to address. Um but in the five short years um that we have been in operation, we've already seen the emergence of renewable diesel, renewable natural gas, renewable propane, and renewable electricity to power our fleets. And this evolution clearly supports the all-in approach that we need to achieve both our short-term and long-term public health and climate goals. So.
Thank you, Corianne. Uh Vice Chair Brasso.
Um thank you, Corianne. I hope I didn't, I didn't, I hope, I hope, I was trying to near the the end of this slide, so it's that's it. But um this is, you know, I I I've appreciated getting caught, you know, tracking the program and seeing seeing where these targets are going and seeing the future laid out this way. Um it's uh, there's a lot there. And so I know that Washington is, has a program that they're currently working on. California has their program currently in play. What just? We're all in connected markets, and I know these supplies, uh uh the suppliers that you're speaking, you know, that you pointed to on the map in Oregon that that are that are either there or potentially there are not only going to be supplying us, but I suspect supplying those other states as well. Um are there other states that are thinking about these programs? And what is the um, I don't know the right term, what is the supply sort of supply shed? Like, what what is the, how far, what does it mean that we've got this in Oregon? It sort of naturally to me makes sense that folks within Washington will be tapping into these resources as well as California, but just trying to trying to get a picture of how how to ground what I see here, recognizing that these are all connected markets too. And 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 we've got a long, we've got a lot of policymaking happening all around this, around these issues.
Yeah, absolutely, Vice Chair Brasso. So um yeah, as I mentioned before, so um um Washington um passed a legislation earlier this year. So they are gearing up for rulemaking to begin a program in 2023. Um um other states are definitely interested in a low-carbon fuel um policy. Um I think um I would, my best guess is that the next states that are kind of moving forward legislatively, New Mexico, Minnesota, uh New York, Vermont, maybe. There is definitely um a lot of interest in the Midwest states because so many of the biofuels are uh produced there, and they really want to find a way to incent the agricultural sector in producing these cleaner fuels and new technologies. Um so 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 that place, I do think that there's going to be in increased interest. Um and actually, um our neighbors to the north, so British Columbia also does have its own Clean Fuels Program. And the Canadian federal uh government is um establishing a national um program um in Canada as well. So there's definitely interest. Um I think the market is strong. Um to your other point about the availability of fuels moving into the future, um I I would say that that's kind of a two-part answer. Um one, if you listen to the states that I've been talking about, you know, New Mexico, you know, um Minnesota, I mean, a large number of the uh the states because they do have climate plans, right? They have goals that they're trying to achieve. They are also ZEV states, right? So they're leaning heavily into the the EV um adoptions. And what happens, as I explained, is like, so if more and more of the credits are being and and fuels are being supplied by electricity, um it is, you know, um it's not so much of an issue about, you know, say, the biofuels and how much biofuels is available to the market. Um but that said, the biofuels market um are in the billions of gallons, right? When we talk about ethanol and biodiesel, um and several new um announcements of renewable diesel production facilities, uh billions of gallons. And so that far exceeds any kind of demand um by the states that are looking at uh, you know, statewide low-carbon fuel standards at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh and just an aside, it's it's my experience that uh boards and commissions need that one person to ask the the dumb question. And I know you guys have uh had a void uh in my absence, so I'm 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 glad to be back and fill that role. Uh and Corianne, I, if you were gonna get to this, I'm sorry. Um I I just, I feel like I'm not tracking something. So we have the millions of gallons. The title of the slide, gas and diesel, and I see the declines, but I was just, I was kind of focused on the electricity line there and what? Is that a different metric than millions of gallons? Um and then shouldn't, shouldn't that be going up if the others are going down? But I think I'm missing something.
Uh yeah, Commissioner Addington. Yeah, so this this the slide is, you know, it's more kind of geared toward those liquid gallons. And so what what it doesn't really translate in this particular picture is, you know, so the volumes of the liquid gallons, like you said, go up and down, you know, um um in in opposite kind of directions. The um the thing about like electricity is it is so much more just efficient as far as the use of the energy in that fuel. And so, you know, even though the electricity line as far as equivalent gallons uh uh gallon equivalents, it goes up a little bit. But it's when you see the slide before this, when it actually translates into credits, where you see a much bigger increase because it is so much cleaner and so much more efficient in the use of that energy.
So these are, these are gallon equivalents for the purpose of this slide.
Right.
Uh Director.
Yeah, thank you, Chair George. And um Commissioner Addington, I didn't think it was a dumb question at all. I had the same question. So um I guess maybe that qualifies me to fulfill that role too. But I think I think Chair George just clarified it. It's essentially gallon equivalence on the slide. And Corianne, maybe you could go back or Stephanie, go back to the graph slide just to make sure we all understand this. Okay, so.
Right, so then in in this slide, Director Whitman, right, so I I apologize. So the 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 left axis here are credits and deficits. And so these are tons of greenhouse gas emissions as opposed to volumes of the fuels.
Right, but then I think on the next slide with the.
And on the next slide, right, the X-axis is in gallons of fuel.
So it's you, on the electricity line on that graph is converted into equivalent gallons of, I guess, fossil um fuels. Yeah. And so because electricity is so efficient and because it's actually becoming more efficient, that's part of the reason you don't see an increase in that line for electricity. that's part of the reason you don't see an increase in that line for electricity.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. I hope that helped.
Thanks. Commissioner Schlesser.
Hi, thank you. I also had a question, a follow up question about the previous slide with the graph. It shows compressed natural gas and renewable natural gas with the same color, the light purple on the previous slide at the top. So I was just wondering if those both of those fuels are given the same carbon intensity value?
Commissioner Schlesser, so that's that's a good question. So they are not given the same carbon intensity. Fossil natural gas is much higher than the renewable forms. Currently, even in our market, I want to say it's it's a it's a really high percentage, ninety percent of the natural gas even in the market today is the renewable form. So it's not the fossil fuel form. So it's moving into the future, the assumption that a very, very large percentage, if not all of that natural gas is renewable. But even within the renewable, there's different carbon intensities. So you know, if you're getting it from a landfill, if you're getting it from digest or, you know, from a wastewater treatment plant, there is a little bit difference. And so that's kind of like partially how we set up the model to to assumptions. Thank you. And actually, Commissioner George, that was the end of my update, and I just wanted to hand it off to Colin for this last slide of the of the presentation.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you, Corianne. Just we wanted to close out this presentation with a brief discussion of really the many different policies and strategies that are both already underway and planned to address greenhouse gas emissions in Oregon's transportation sector. I think the commission is familiar with the three legged stool that's often used to illustrate the fundamental mechanisms to address emissions in the transportation sector, those being cleaner vehicles, cleaner fuels, and reducing how much those vehicles are used or how much they travel. And what we're showing here is really just a partial breakdown of two of those fundamental mechanisms with a focus on several key policies or policy types that have or will come to the commission for consideration. Among Oregon's state agencies, the commission's authority is really uniquely well positioned to address those first two areas, cleaner vehicles and cleaner fuels. The commission, of course,
Commissioner Schlesser, do you have a question?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that my I had to actually click on lower hand. I'm sorry about that.
No worries. Go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I was just saying that, of course, just yesterday, the commission voted to make Oregon the first state to follow California's zero emission vehicle standards for medium and heavy duty trucks. And Oregon is also second only to California in the portion of our light duty zero emission vehicles that are already being sold to Oregonians, and that's thanks in part to the light duty ZEV rules that EQC adopted back in, I think, two thousand and five. And of course, another mechanism that's helping drive that light duty transition to electricity is the Oregon Clean Vehicle Rebate Program. Now, as well, we've just been discussing Oregon's primary policy to get cleaner fuels fueling our transportation sector and have signaled our intent to develop a proposal for how the commission could expand that program further, possibly much further, as Corey's second to last slide indicated, the potential to do nearly three times as much reductions over the next decade as as the program has scoped in its in its first decade. The Clean Fuels Program is also helping address another important aspect of decarbonizing our transportation sector by providing funding for outreach and education to the public about these new technologies that enable cleaner vehicles and fuels with a really a particular focus on outreach to Oregon's communities for which those new technologies technologies are at least are least well understood or for whom there are the most barriers for accessing them. And then finally, we listed the Climate Protection Program here because that proposed program, if adopted, would establish enforceable and declining limits on fossil fuels, and the majority of which are gasoline and diesel used in vehicles. So I guess the point here is that the commission has adopted or will consider in the future some of the most significant state policies to address two of the fundamental or two of the three fundamental ways to decarbonize Oregon's largest sector of greenhouse gas emissions. And I wanted to just kind of have a moment here in this presentation to to reflect on all those different strategies because we know a lot of them come to this commission and and there's a lot of interactions and interplay between them. And just want to show that broader picture here. I'll note that success with these strategies will also yield, as as Corianne mentioned, we we think some pretty exciting and and significant improvements, not just to Oregon's meeting its our greenhouse gas reduction goals, but to local air quality by removing harmful diesel particulate matter across the state and particularly for our communities that tend to be closest to our freeways, freight operations and industrial concentrations. Those communities, of course, are disproportionately Oregon's low income BIPOC and tribal communities. So I'll wrap this up noting yesterday you adopted the advanced clean trucks rule, signaling the beginning of widespread electrification in Oregon's medium and heavy duty fleets. The Clean Fuels Credit and the Clean Fuels Program will help make that transition smoother by helping fleet owners fund investments in these new vehicles and charging infrastructure like Corey was describing earlier, particularly with our advanced crediting mechanism that was recently adopted by the commission. So I'll I'll wrap it up there. But again, we just wanted to zoom out a little bit here for the commission and and know some some of these connections and in particular with the Climate Protection Program that we proposed, which I know we're going to talk about at length here in our next agenda item. And in the interest of time, I'm going to stop there and happy to take any further questions.
Well, thank you very much. And as you said, our our next update is is directly related. So I think we will take one more question or comment from Commissioner Addington, and then we should probably move on to the Climate Protection Program update. Commissioner Addington.
Thank you, Chair George. Colin is so as the you know, in in twenty years or or thirty years from now, as we increase the electrification of transportation, you know, I guess what I'm asking, is there a is there an equal effort to make sure that we will have the amount of electricity available for the electric electrification of transportation to go along with everything else? I mean, we are focused on conversion and we're also focused on, you know, trying to get rid of things like coal and and natural gas, electricity. There's obviously a lot of renewables going in, but I just wondered if there's any corresponding look at the supply of electricity as we go down this path.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Addington. There there is, and actually, it's it's just especially exciting now when earlier this year, Oregon Legislature passed a legislation that requires the supply of electricity across Oregon, including any electricity going into vehicles. And by twenty forty, that 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 electricity be entirely emissions free. And and what that legislation has really kicked off is a an enormous effort, I suspect, in the coming years in that timeframe you just you just mentioned over the next ten and twenty years to deliberately plan for delivering electricity that is emissions free and in the quantities, the increasing quantities required as other parts of our economy electrify. So one of the things that this legislation requires primarily in work between the electric utilities and the Public Utility Commission are the development of what are called clean energy plans, and and those are just about to get underway for the first time. And and again, and those will be updated periodically throughout that timeframe to assure that there is a reliable ability to deliver not just the expanded electricity needed for for electrification, but also the expanded delivery of of emissions free electricity, which makes electricity increasingly the the clean energy fuel of the future for a sector like transportation. And which is one of the reasons why, again, to go back to that that chart we saw, while electricity can increase perhaps modestly in as far as actual electrons going into vehicles, as that electricity becomes cleaner and cleaner, the the credits it generates and the and the reductions it's achieving can can grow much more significantly. But but suffice it to say that those that legislation and the and the planning processes that it it is going to to kick off are are expected to evaluate and address that 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 real concern and and challenge, I think, in delivering not just more electricity as we electrify transportation, but cleaner electricity as well. I see Director Whitman has his hand up as well.
Director Whitman.
Thank you, Chair George, and thank you, Colin. I'll I'll just add a little bit to what Colin said. So on the electricity front, obviously, we're in a regional market for electricity also. So there's also, in addition to the Oregon specific work that Colin just described, really stimulated by the passage of House Bill twenty twenty one in the last legislative session for Oregon, there's work going on in the region, including work by the Northwest Power Planning Council and the utilities working regionally also to to assure that that hundred percent clean electricity is going to be available because other states are going to be looking for some more clean electricity. Washington has some more has essentially the same legislation on the books. California, and I suspect even some of our neighbors to the east will be headed in that direction to some degree also. So this is really a regional effort to accelerate the pace of renewable energy supply in the region and frankly nationally. So just know that it's not just Oregon, but it's it's really our utilities working together to to provide that supply that we're all looking for. The other only other thing I want to mention is on the a lot of this is about electrification, but for portions of our economy and portions of our state, liquid fuels are going to continue to be important. So as Corianne said in her presentation, renewable liquid fuels, renewable natural gas, green hydrogen, clean hydrogen are going to be important, particularly in applications where we don't have a good delivery system for electricity. And so we know that. And so it really is planning for all of these renewable energy sources to fit all the different needs that exist in the state.
Thank you, Director. Well, this has been a great presentation, and it's it's just wonderful to see. I mean, this Clean Fuels Program is a success. And it's also so exciting to see that this this strong market for cleaner fuels being developed, you know, includes some that are produced right here in in our state. So creating jobs right here while also helping achieve our climate goals. So again, thank you to everyone. And and let's shift to the the big picture on our Climate Protection Program update. And Colin, you get to stay with us for that. And we also want to welcome Nicole Singh.
Great. Thank you. Good morning again, Chair George, members of the commission. My name is Colin McConaughey, and I'm now joined by Nicole Singh, our senior climate policy advisor. And we set aside this agenda item to discuss the proposed Climate Protection Program, and it's really divided into two parts, two broad topics this morning. The first, like several of our past updates to the commission over this year, as we progress through our rulemaking process, will provide an overview of the proposed program and how it's designed to work. But then secondly, and new for the commission this morning, is a report out on the comments we received during our public commentary at the close late last month. As part of that discussion of the of the key areas of feedback we received, we'll be sharing some of the areas of the previously proposed rules that DEQ is considering potential changes to. Next slide, please. So I think this is a familiar slide as well, and I'll I'll fill in for Nicole here to remind the commission of the extension extensive public process that DEQ has conducted to get to this point. Almost immediately following Governor Brown's executive order in March of last year, we began preliminary outreach to hear how stakeholders and the public wanted the agency to conduct the formal program development. This informed one significant process adjustment for how the agency often conducts rulemakings to establish new programs. And this was actually to not start that formal process right away. Rather, it was clear from that initial outreach that the agency and the commission would benefit from some significant outreach and engagement before determining the exact scope and nature of the rulemaking and the right perspectives and representatives to engage in the Rules Advisory Committee. In the latter half of last year, we devoted this pre-rulemaking engagement, which entailed almost a dozen public meetings, many of which were half day long technical discussions about really many different aspects of how the program could be designed. And these meetings were very well attended with well over a hundred participants each. And I want to emphasize the the participate part. Many of the folks that showed up at those meetings participated in all of them, including the subsequent day long RAC meetings this year. So using the input received during this phase, DEQ, this allowed DEQ to provide the commission with extensive information about the stakeholder interests and concerns and the communities, organizations and businesses most involved. This helped inform, I believe, the commission's determination of who you asked to participate in the Rules Advisor Committee, ultimately leading to the appointment of a diverse group of thirty four different individuals. Now, with the RAC appointed by the commission, DEQ then proceeded to meet with this group seven times in as many months up through July of this year. And if the feedback in the early sessions was extensive, I I actually not sure what word to choose to qualify the 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 voluminous amount of feedback in both quantity and quality throughout the process of engaging with the RAC again in the first seven months of this year. Then following that process with the RAC, DEQ published draft proposed rules for a sixty day comment period on August fifth. DEQ received a request for extending this comment period and added twenty one days for a total of eighty one days for public review and comment of the proposed rules. And when the comment period closed on October twenty fifth, we had received over seven thousand six hundred comments. And now we are in the process of reviewing and responding to every one of those comments and considering potential changes of the rules that we plan to propose for the commission to consider adopting next month. And I'll note there at the very bottom right corner that if adopted next month, that would mean the program rules will become operational next year. And we can go to the next slide where I'll briefly explain what program operational would mean. So at its core, this proposed program would establish enforceable and declining limits on greenhouse gas emissions from essentially all fossil fuels used throughout Oregon with the exception of natural gas used in power plants. As I mentioned previously, this would include gasoline and diesel used in our vehicles. The program would also cover natural gas used in a variety of applications such as space and water heating for our homes and businesses, as well as natural gas used in various industrial manufacturing applications. Program would also cover non-road uses of diesel fuels such as off-road construction equipment or diesel powered backup generators and boilers. The program would require companies that import and supply those fuels to hold permits in sufficient quantity to cover the emissions from the fossil fuels they supply. And the number of permits that DEQ would issue each year would be decreased to enable the program to allow fewer and fewer of these fossil fuels to be supplied over time. Overall, this cap on fossil fuels will cover about thirty million tons of greenhouse gases, which is equivalent to nearly half of all emissions in Oregon, and we'll cover that a little bit more later in this presentation. Next slide, please. So briefly here, and I'll hand it over to
Please, Vice Chair Brasso.
Thank you. And I and I held, maybe I'll put park this question here, Colin answered here if there's another place. But, you know, we just had the presentation on clean fuels. And I see I hear, you know, this program is going to cover roughly half of the state's emissions. You know, it'd be helpful even in a whether it's a Venn diagram or whether, you know, understanding, I know that there is a direct relationship between clean fuels and how it impacts these the the this cap. And then and I suspect that there's an overlap where the the strength of one versus the other influences the the other program. So I just I don't want to, I don't, if you're getting into it, but it's something that since we've just heard about clean fuels, it'd be helpful to to understand since I know they're really they're closely connected and you spoke to that.
Certainly, Commissioner Brasso, I'll I'll take that now because we don't get into it in that way. We actually later on in the in the presentation, we'll we'll cover how this program, as well as a few others, really end up covering about eighty percent of all of Oregon's greenhouse gas emissions. But we don't get into the portion here of those thirty million tons that I mentioned are would be covered by this program. What portion of that is the Clean Fuels Program? And and I believe the Clean Fuels Program would the the tailpipe emissions from transportation that would be covered by this program as well as that are covered by Clean Fuels are a little more than twenty million tons. So a little more than two thirds of those emissions that I mentioned on the previous slide are gasoline and diesel used in vehicles and thus covered by both the Clean Fuels Program and if adopted, this program as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. So just real quickly, one other really different and distinct part of the proposed program would establish an evaluation of what we're calling best available emission reductions and would be applicable for certain facilities that have unique sources. and would be applicable for certain facilities that have unique sources of emissions, primarily really as a as a chemical byproduct of their manufacturing processes. And this is really a relatively narrow part of the overall proposed program, which would cover by our estimate of the current facilities meeting their criteria and the emissions they report to DEQ would account for about thirteen facilities that collectively emit around one point seven million tons annually. The proposal for these emissions and from these facilities is to conduct site-specific evaluations of the technologies and practices that could be employed to reduce their emissions while allowing them to continue to manufacture products they were built to produce. So that's a really high, we wanted to just introduce at a really high level the proposal, just to remind everyone of that. And we're going to get into more details there. And for that, I will hand it over to Nicole Singh.
Okay. Well, so I'll I'll put this question out too, and it might also belong in the parking lot as as you may be addressing, I am, I know similar issues later. So these are those facilities, like you said, for which there there are unique technical and engineering issues that at this time don't allow for significant reductions. And then there's a site-specific review. One of the questions I've had is, you know, we're we're going to talk, I know shortly, about investing in offsets and CCI investments. So these facilities for which it is found that they can't reduce their contribution now, my recollection is they will not be required to invest in some sort of offset program or CCI program. Is that correct? And and if so, what's the thinking? And also, if we're going to get to that on a future slide, also feel free to to park the question.
Thank you, Chair George. I I don't think we are going to get into that. So I I will say that you're correct that the proposal is not to require purchases of those community climate investments or CCIs by by these facilities regulated by this technology standard. I I will add that I I think it's often, I think, or colloquially understood that some of these emissions may be very hard to reduce if if so long as production is is allowed to continue. There just may not, in some cases, be applicable technologies, practices that that work for that facility to continue making its products. But there, but I I will say that we haven't investigated that yet in these thirteen, in these thirteen cases. And that really is the point of this part of the proposed program is, is to do those deep investigations, those site-specific investigations. And I think, so I, so I don't want to foreclose and and accept as as conventional wisdom that there there aren't deep reductions available, at least in some of these cases. And that's really the the purpose of of this part of the proposal is to conduct the deep investigations to to explore whether there are. And also, I will say, to continue investigating, the proposal is to continue updating and doing these evaluations every five years so that if, as technologies arise or change, that we're able to continue to look out and and find those and apply those to these facilities.
Thank you. I I appreciate that, Colin. I guess, you know, as I've been thinking about this for for a couple of reasons, it seems to me that we should, that the state should seriously consider requiring investment in in some sort of offset program for those facilities for which it is not believed that there is reduction technology to invest in. Number one, from my perspective, for the very fact that you mentioned that that it is believed that for a few of these industries, it it is quite unlikely, or at least at this point in time, we cannot envision exactly what they would do to reduce those emissions, that there may not be a technological solution that's just waiting five years out or ten years out. In that case, to me, it it seems particularly important that there is some offset investment because there there just simply may not be a technical technological solution to them, for them. And so that if they are not investing in some sort of offset, then we're essentially just kind of seeding any improvement for for that contribution of greenhouse gases. And then secondarily, for those industries or technologies where there may be the possibility of improvements in the future, you know, when you just kind of look at what the economics surrounding investing in new technologies or new research are, there really seems, you know, that we haven't provided any incentive. We want to incentivize the development of new technologies where there could be the potential for those. So this is just something that I'm speaking for myself that has kind of concerned me because certainly we're we're going to get to the CCIs and that whole investment protocol here shortly, I know. But it seems to me that this is a missing piece and that if we accept that there may not be technological solutions, then I think we probably do need investment in offsets. Now, I also want to acknowledge that that was not part of the proposal, that it went out for public review. And so this is an additional thought that I'm bringing forward at this time. But but if not now, I think it's one that that DEQ should should consider and that we should discuss further.
Thank you, Chair George. Noted. Absolutely.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
I'm going to hand it over to Nicole Singh now to to pick up the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Colin, and thank you, Commissioners. And, you know, Chair George, later in the presentation, we'll talk about, you know, some of the comments that we received in terms of what we put out in the proposal. And we definitely received a lot of comments on the best available emissions reduction approach. So that's definitely an area where we do want to talk to the Commission about some of the things that we're considering. And so having this type of feedback is, you know, incredibly helpful. So I'm just gonna, next slide, please. So I'm just going to take a step back a little bit, as Colin said, to recap, you know, where we were when we put out the proposed rule. Because, you know, when we dive into the comments and some of the, some of the suggestions we were receiving in comments, it's, you sort of have to take a step back and say, okay, what exactly did we propose? And then the type of comments we were receiving. So again, as as Colin had mentioned, you know, we had a pretty deep engagement process even before we got to the rulemaking. And that engagement process had a lot to do with what we originally had defined as like the goals of the program. And those eventually kind of morphed into the program purposes, if you're actually reading the the rule itself. And so as we've talked about from the very beginning, the core emphasis of this program is significant reduced greenhouse gas emissions. You know, we want to couple that with achieving co-benefits for other types of air contaminants, if possible. And a huge focus has always been on trying to find ways to promote equity. So and, you know, basically, the way it reads in the rule is enhancing public welfare for Oregon communities, particularly our environmental justice communities. And some of our environmental justice include include our communities of color, our communities experiencing lower income, and also our rural communities. Next slide, please. So just overall, very high level, you know, what is the scope of the Climate Protection Program? How, you know, what are some of the main elements in terms of how this program is going to work? So again, we are going to require that covered entities reduce greenhouse gas emissions. As I just said earlier, we're going to also prioritize reductions of greenhouse gases and other air contaminants in environmental justice communities. Again, as we've noted many times, this is because those are the communities that are disproportionately burdened, usually by air contamination and by the effects of climate change. We're also trying to provide covered entities with compliance options so that could help minimize business and consumer economic impacts. And we're also going to allow covered fuel suppliers an option to partly comply via providing funds for the investments that we call the Community Climate Investments, which I'll talk about a little bit more. Next slide, please. So in two, in terms of who we're actually regulating in this program, we're actually going to be regulating the three natural gas utilities that supply nearly all the natural gas throughout Oregon. So again, we're basically regulating the emissions associated with natural gas combustion. And all of us who, you know, are using natural gas in different ways, all of us are creating those emissions every time we use natural gas. But the point of regulation in this program for that is going to be at the natural gas utilities. For the other types of liquid fuels, gasoline and diesel, many of the fuels that Corianne was talking about, and also things for home heating oil, and also things like propane, the point of regulation is actually going to be those fuel suppliers who bring those fuels into the states. And the way that's structured currently in the rule is we have something called a declining threshold. So what that essentially means is these fuel suppliers are reporting emissions to through our GHG reporting program. There is an emissions obligation, there's a total emission number that they report. Looking at that total number, we're saying, hey, if you're at two hundred thousand tons or higher, you're going to be covered under this program in what we're calling the first compliance period. And we do have three-year compliance periods. So for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, it's going to start at that two hundred thousand threshold. And then over time, it's going to decrease. It steps down each compliance period. So you can see in this slide, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven, it it moves down to a hundred thousand. Twenty twenty-eight, it moves to fifty, and then twenty thirty-one, it moves to twenty-five thousand. That initial threshold, that two hundred thousand, it it captures a significant amount of emissions associated with this sector, almost ninety percent, but it doesn't capture all of them. And so I know for folks who've been involved for a long time, we're trying to balance the fact that we want to cover as many emissions as we can, but we also want to be mindful of the fact that we want to have some time for people to transition into the program. And so for some of the smaller fossil fuel suppliers, we want to give them a little bit more time to transition into the program. So that's why you see this step down over these different compliance periods. But we also want to try to maximize as much of the emissions that we can. And so based on all the public engagement and based on the feedback that we got, of course, everyone had different opinions on this. But this is essentially, you know, what we thought was the appropriate balance and what we've presented in the proposed rule. I'm just going to skip to the next slide. So as Chair George mentioned, the, you know, the cap program is going to apply to the fossil fuel suppliers or natural gas utilities and the liquid fuel suppliers. The cap doesn't apply to the best available emissions reductions approach. That's a site-specific approach. So the the emissions cap that we are proposing, basically when the program starts in twenty twenty-two, is about twenty-eight million tons. And the trajectory that you see here and the trajectory that's in the proposed rule, it is based on like the forty-five percent by twenty thirty-five and the fifty percent, excuse me, the eighty percent by twenty fifty. Where we are starting the cap, and I know we've talked about this many times, but I I just want to reorientate everyone again. Our starting cap, you know, our proposal for starting cap was based on average twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen emissions. Again, that has a lot to do with the fact that the reporting data, which again, I think I've stressed, which is is amazing that Oregon has such a long track record of actually having reported data, not estimates for emissions. But since we are basing a lot of the calculations in the program, we're going to be using reported data in terms of compliance. You know, that really led us to using actual reported data to to estimate the cap. So we are using twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen average reported data. You know, as we've talked about before, we don't have, you know, two thousand, we don't have data before twenty ten. So we we talk a lot about nineteen ninety targets when you think of state targets. And when you, we talk about the states, the state inventory of GHG emissions. But we don't exactly have nineteen ninety numbers. But we do acknowledge that nineteen ninety numbers would would probably be lower than twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen. And we think that's about two to three million tons lower, based on some very basic estimates. So that's where we are now. The reason I'm spending some time on this now is we received a lot of comments about the emissions cap. So I just want to, I just want to make sure people know where we are now. So then we talk a little bit later about some of the comments we received. We can have this as kind of an orientation point. So next slide, please.
So that that might be a good, a good heads up too. I mean, I think one of the things we want to do today, and we will certainly be be spending a lot of time listening to those comments. I think some of us have, we've also heard them and read through them. So I guess one of the questions that whether whether it's now or later that we probably should discuss is is whether the EQC wants DEQ to include an alternative to reduce emissions by ninety percent by twenty fifty and and what what that looks like and and if we want to include that in the thinking going forward. Because it's, I think it's really important for us to come to some clarity on that now because, right, there's, there's not too long before that this package of rules is going to come before the Commission. So I don't know if now is the place to to discuss that, or maybe perhaps after we've discussed the the major comments.
Chair George, there is a slide very near the end that I, that illustrates a a couple of different trajectories. It has this trajectory that Nicole just walked through, as well as a more stringent one that we modeled, as well as a scenario that's based on our estimate of what a nineteen ninety baseline with the same forty-five and eighty percent targets would result in. So we could, we could wait, hold it until then, or we could skip ahead to that slide if you'd like to do that now.
No, that sounds perfect, Colin. Let's, let's wait for that. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you, Chair George. And so I'll try to move through these quickly because I can, we are interested in seeing where, you know, where the comments have come. So just really very high level, again, the Community Climate Investments Program. Again, this is, you know, the terminology that's usually used is it's an alternative compliance option. So essentially what that means is for, if they're not, if some of our covered fuel suppliers aren't able to reduce their emissions a hundred percent themselves, there is an option for them to basically invest. They basically pay money to a CCI third-party entity. That CCI third-party entity invests those funds into projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout Oregon. And in exchange for that, they receive a CCI credit. And they can use a CCI credit as a as a compliance tool under the program. So I'm just going to skip this slide quickly and move into some of the parameters. In terms of the CCI priorities, and we've had a lot of extensive engagement on this, and we worked a lot with our environmental justice communities on trying to structure a CCI program that would work for equitable reasons. You know, one of the main concerns when you have some of these alternative compliance instruments is that emissions reductions won't occur at some of the places that folks are most interested in those emissions reductions occurring. So there's a concern that these types of programs can sometimes further inequity because they're allowing some of the covered fuel suppliers to move their emissions obligations around. Now, I I would definitely say for our program, because we're looking at mobile sources. Again, if you think of emissions associated with GHG emissions and gasoline and diesel, you know, the the real impact to our environmental justice communities is their location next to transportation corridors. So any way in which we can help reduce the use of, you know, GHG emissions from those fuels and those impact the co-pollutants, those are all hopefully benefits that will accrue to our environmental justice communities. But of course, we have other ways in which we can try to focus equity in the program. And we have tried to structure the CCI projects themselves to focus on equity. So we we talk a lot about the CCI priorities of promoting public health, environmental and economic benefits for environmental justice communities. And we talk a lot about CCI priorities are looking at projects that would not only reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but if possible, co-pollutants and particularly in justice, environmental justice communities. I will just flag one of the other really important elements of the CCI program. And and we can talk more about this, I think, when we get to the comments, Chair George, because we'll hear how people gave us comments on CCIs. But the other important element of the CCI program is essentially, since we're giving someone a credit and they're not having to make that that one ton of GHG emissions reduction, there really has been a lot of emphasis from stakeholders and the public that we need to make sure that that each of these credits on average do represent one emission reduction, one ton of emissions reductions. So I'm going to skip to the next slide. I'm sorry, I'm going to move quickly because I do want to get us to the comments. And so I would say, you know, obviously, for some of our, I think if you are a covered fuel supplier, you know, what you're probably most interested when you're thinking about CCIs is, you know, how many you can use? And how many you can use is, the terminology recall that is the compliance obligation. Your, and your compliance obligation is essentially your total emission. So in our case, again, we have those three-year control periods. So your your emissions obligation is essentially your your three years of your total emissions. So that's one key element. How many can you use? And that's what you see here. That's the ten percent is how many you could use from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four, fifteen percent in the second control period, and it moves up to twenty percent in the third. And what I mean in terms of use is you're allowed to have your tot, for your total emissions obligation, ten percent of that could be met with CCIs. So that's how many you're allowed to use. How long you can use them is what we call this banking. So if you have a CCI, how long you can use it into the future, that's banking. If you want to, if you're saying how many you can purchase at any given time, that's what we're calling like a purchase limit. And obviously, what's also very important is the price that you're going to pay for each of those CCIs. I'm going to dig more into the CCI price a little bit later because it's an area that I know we do want to spend some time because we have received quite a lot of comments about the use of CCIs and the price of CCIs. But I just wanted to orientate the group to, you know, where we are right now and what we put out in the proposed rule.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brasso.
Thank you for this, Nicole. It'd be helpful as we move forward on the on the use of CCIs and this percentage that that's a lot of of the compliance obligation. To just understand over time, I see going from ten, fifteen to twenty percent over those different compliance periods. And and yet I know that there also the amount, their their obligation, I assume decreases with the cap over time. And so it would be helpful to understand on an absolute basis how much that ten percent, fifteen percent, and twenty percent is. Frankly, just for my own purposes, so I can just picture what what that looks like on an absolute basis versus is ten percent really, is twenty percent really just double of ten percent in terms of how many CCIs they can purchase?
Yeah, thanks, Vice Chair.
Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think hopefully there's, we have a couple, we have another slide coming up, which I think will hopefully answer some of that. And we can even dig more into that, I hope, in this next, it might come a little bit later. These, we're going to show an example of someone using CCIs in terms of trying to meet its compliance obligation.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
So I'll just say here really quickly, um, we, we have in the proposed rule, a two-year review of the CCI program. Part of that review is to look at whether we are, we are actually achieving, you know, those emissions reductions that we want on the one, on average, that one ton for one credit. And we'll also be looking at other components of the CCI program. But I did want to flag that this two-year CCI program review was in many ways proposed because of this, this um, emphasis that, that we've received, that we do need to make sure that the CCI program is actually reducing emissions. Next slide, please. So I would just say really quickly, I think we've talked about this before, we have one CCI credit price. Um, and a lot of that is because we're trying to promote like an equitable distribution of CCI projects. Um, what we did promote, propose in, in the rule is we basically based uh, the CCI price on, you know, an EPA social cost of carbon. Um, and essentially that way that works is it meant for the first year of the program, it would be about eighty-one dollars. And then over time, this would increase and it would also be adjusted for inflation. Um, you know, when I talk about the equitable program benefits and the single price for the CCI, what you've seen sometimes in other programs is there's a competition around price. If, if some programs have different projects and some of those projects look like a cheaper price and your fuel suppliers are trying to decide which projects to pick. You know, they might potentially only pick projects that seem cheaper. So that has been a concern that's been raised based on experience in other programs. Again, ours is not being structured that way. Our fuel suppliers wouldn't actually be selecting the projects. They would just be contributing the funds to the CCI third-party entity. And the CCI third-party entities would be working with us and with communities on figuring out which projects were of most interest to those communities. I think the other important thing to remember is a lot of the projects that we're talking about are going to be projects that are, you know, very expensive. Those, these are the kinds of, you know, projects that need to get done. Because often what happens is the projects that appear to be cheaper are the ones that happen first. And when we're thinking about moving away from fossil fuel use, like Corian and others, you know, there's multiple projects that we're running to try to support this. But again, building infrastructure in rural communities, that's not inexpensive. So those types of projects that are often of interest, that might be of most importance to our environmental justice communities, those projects do tend to be more expensive. So when I, when we kind of use this terminology of one CCI credit, one price, equitable program benefits, it is a little bit trying to capture the fact that we are trying to design a program where we can find the right projects for the right communities. And it doesn't have to be that there's sort of this uh, difference in the price. We're like, oh, it's going to be more expensive in that community versus this community. We can kind of take that out of the equation and just see that we're making sure that we're developing projects that kind of meet the needs of communities in Oregon. Um, I'm just going to, you know, flip through this pretty quickly. I did want to point out that we, 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 we are proposing unlimited banking of the CCIs in the current rule. And as I said, this is, this is the flow process for how uh, a fuel supplier would actually, you know, provide the money to the third-party entity. The third-party entity gives us a receipt, the fuel supplier applies to DEQ, and then DEQ is the entity that actually gives the credit to the fuel supplier. Next slide, please. I'm just being mindful of time. So again, I, I talked about this briefly. We have three-year compliance periods. So the first compliance period is two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four. I did want to point out that this means that the first demonstration of compliance is actually in November of two thousand twenty-five. You know, the reporting data comes in a year after. So even though the compliance period is two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four, in actuality for our fuel suppliers, they would actually be first demonstrating compliance in November of two thousand twenty-five. And demonstration of com- compliance is pretty simple. It's your total covered emissions for those three years. It has to total your compliance instruments and your community climate investment. So these are my emissions. I have to have enough community climate investments and enough total compliance instruments. And again, the community climate investments can only be used up to that percentage that we talked about before. So again, for our covered entities, I just want to be clear, because the demonstration of compliance is in November of two thousand twenty-five, they cannot use two thousand twenty-five compliance instruments. So if DEQ is distributing compliance instruments every year, they can't use two thousand twenty-five compliance instruments for that first three years. But we are allowing covered fuel suppliers to purchase CCIs in two thousand twenty-five and use them in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. I did want to point that out, you know, it is, it was one way in which we thought we could give some flexibility to covered fuel suppliers that if they are still trying to make decisions about how many CCIs they should purchase, they could wait until they've had all their emissions and to figure out if they actually need to purchase ECI. So I, I did want to point that out. And next slide, please. So I am going to talk here really quickly and hopefully Vice Chair Barasso, this gets a little bit to some of the questions that you were bringing up, which is, you know, how does this actually work in practice and how people could use CCIs and compliance instruments? So I'm going to, I, we're going to, in the past, I know I, we've had some of these illustrative examples and we've, we've talked about how these, how fuel suppliers could potentially comply with the program. And we're going to try to put a little bit more numbers now that we actually have more of a program to hopefully demonstrate this a little bit more in real time. So I'm just going to, I'm not going to spend too much time on the compliance instrument distribution. I, it's, it's a very important and it's a key part of the program, but in the interest of time, I won't spend too much time on compliance instrument distribution. What I, I, what I will say is if you look at the proposed rule, if you're a natural gas utility, you can see now how many compliance instruments you would receive from DEQ every year. And partially that's because as we've talked about in the past, the fuel suppliers, liquid fuel suppliers or propane suppliers, it's a far more dynamic market. Corian was also referring to this earlier. It's a far more dynamic market. Emissions change, a lot of people come in and out. Our natural gas utilities, it's a much more stable marketplace. So essentially for the natural gas emissions, the natural gas utilities, we have their portion of the cap and their basic compliance instrument distribution is essentially just their share of their two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen emissions. So since we know that, we can actually just calculate their compliance instrument distributions. For our fuel suppliers, that's very different. It's a, it's sort of a rolling average over time. It will be updated over time. So it's not as if we can say right now, we know everyone's compliance instrument distribution. As, once this program, you know, was to be adopted, so if this program was to be adopted and we're talking about starting in two thousand twenty-two, you know, we would announce then, hey, we have the data and here's the compliance instrument distribution for the first year. But that is something that's going to actually change over time. So we do have a couple of examples here. The first thing I'm, I would say for our example is we're just going to assume for these two liquid fuel suppliers, we're going to start them off in two thousand twenty-two with compliance instrument distribution. So DEQ is going to give to these, these entities. We're just going to assume for the purpose of this example that in two thousand twenty-two, what DEQ gives to them is equivalent to their two thousand seventeen, nine, two thousand nineteen emissions. So we're starting our cap at two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen emissions. We're going to give them instruments and those instruments exactly sync up with their two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen emissions. And some of what you're going to see is the compliance instrument distribution is going to, the decrease from DEQ is going to track like a long-term reduction trajectory. Again, with our, our fuel suppliers, like things will go up and down. So we could have some folks who are doing it faster, some folks are doing it slower, and that will impact their compliance instrument distribution. But just in the background, we're trying to say this is on the same target as like a long-term emissions reduction trajectory. And then you're going to see in this next slide that rather than show you each year of the compliance period, I just averaged across the first three years. So you're just going to see two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four averaged because essentially compliance is across three years. So rather than show a whole bunch of bars, we just tried to stick to showing you two bars. So you're going to see a number and that number is basically their average across those three years. So next slide, please. Okay, so our first fuel supplier, I call them fuel supplier example A. So I'm going to say for our first compliance period, number one, we DEQ have given to this liquid fuel supplier, that's the CI, is the compliance instruments. We've given them nine hundred and forty-five thousand to, you know, correct, uh, compliance instruments. They don't actually have emissions of nine hundred and forty-five thousand. This, this liquid fuel supplier, they were able to reduce their emissions using biofuels, but they were not able to reduce their emissions to nine hundred and forty-five thousand. Instead, their emissions at the end of the three-year control period, their average emissions is nine hundred, nine hundred, I'm going to say nine nine seven five hundred. So in this case, they do have a difference between what we distributed to them and their emissions. Now, they potentially could trade with other entities, but we're going to assume they weren't even able to trade with other entities. Or they just made the decision that that wasn't the best option for them. Instead, this fuel supplier has actually decided to take advantage of the CCIs that are available. They don't purchase all the CCIs, but they do purchase CCIs to get up to their emissions compliance obligation. So for them, that means for the first compliance period, they ended up purchasing about fifty-two thousand CCIs. They're in the same situation in the second compliance period. You know, the, the compliance instruments on average that we've distributed to them is eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, but their emissions are about nine hundred and seven thousand. So again, they've had to purchase CCIs. Yes, they could look at trading if trading was available. Um, they, but they, again, they opt not to use that. And so instead they choose to purchase the CCIs and they purchase about seventy-two thousand. So with this, what you can see in this chart right here is that little green bar is the, the CCI credit usage. So you can kind of see that, okay, this is how many they had to purchase. Now, if you go to the next slide, I'm going to show you an example of someone who actually does end up using the full amount of CCIs that are available to them. So again, that's based on those percentages that I talked about before, the ten percent and the fifteen percent. So in this case, again, it's, we've given the same amount of compliance instruments, nine hundred and forty-five thousand. And then in the, but you can see in this case, the emissions are higher, right? This person's emissions are even higher. And they opt, again, rather to not use trading, they actually opt to use and purchase the full amount of CCI. So in this case, they use the full ten percent. That's the hundred and five thousand. And that allows for them to comply with the program at that, at the higher emissions level. The same thing happens in compliance period two. The emissions that they have are about nine hundred and eighty thousand. And so again, they purchase the maximum amount of CCIs available to them so that they can meet their compliance obligation. So if you kind of, if you look back and forth, and I know it's hard, you can see that that green bar is, is getting bigger, right? Because that green bar is the fact that they're having to use more CCIs. And that of course does mean that the emissions that they're actually putting out at the source are actually higher too, because you're actually able to use more CCIs. And so as there's that bigger green block, if you switch back and forth, you can see that the total charts are actually higher. It's kind of hard to see if you.
I, I just want to, to Vice Chair Barasso's question earlier, just, uh, it, with some arithmetic here, you can, you can see Vice Chair that while in this scenario, they're maxing out uh, the, the allowed usage of CCIs and the uh, maximum allowed increases by fifty percent between the first control period and the second, right? It goes from ten to fifteen percent. And yet you see, because of the cap decline, their maximum utilization of CCIs does not increase by fifty percent. Uh, it goes from one hundred and five thousand to one hundred and forty-five thousand. So that, the, the delta there is, is because, is because of that, that interplay that I, I believe you were alluding to. Because of the cap decline, we're not, we're not effectively allowing fifty percent increase in CCI utilizations between the first three-year period and the second.
Yeah, and thank you, Colin. And I know there's a lot of numbers on these slides, so, but they were a couple of, that was a couple of the few points that we were trying to make. And you know, I, we also want to be, you know, completely clear that if you look at compliance period one, if someone is to use a full use of their CCIs, you can see that there's more emissions at that source. And you can actually see in this case that it's, it's above that one, that one point, that approximate one million. You know, that's a, that's higher than it would have been for the other fuel supplier A who opts to use less CCIs. So it does have an impact on the total amount of emissions obligation in terms of compliance, but it also has an impact on the total amount of emissions that you see from the actual sources.
Vice Chair Barasso.
Thank you. Um, this is helpful and I appreciate just, I appreciate seeing this. I, I, the, the numbers, I, yeah, they resonate and I, 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 I'm tracking. One question, um, if uh, so just to clarify, well, maybe two questions. One, the percentage of CCIs, the maximum percentage of CCIs they're allowed to use is a, is a, is a percentage of their total emissions. It's not a percentage of their compliance instruments. Um, and so for instance, in both, in, in these two slides back to back, it's not, the CCI, the compliance instruments are nine hundred, nine hundred forty-five thousand. But the, the ten percent maximum isn't based on nine hundred forty-five thousand, it's based on their total emissions. So I just want to confirm that. I'm seeing the nodding, so yes, I'm getting that, tracking that. Thank you. Second thing, um, you said that they could get their, do their compliance, um, and at the end of the compliance period, they have to essentially submit their compliance instruments. What happens if we get to the end of the compliance period and they do, and, and, and their emissions are, let's say, uh, I'm looking at the fuel supplier B, their emissions are one point one million emissions. And so now we've got this point where they, they're, they're above, even with a ten percent, maximum ten percent u- utilization of the CCIs, they, they're above. Yeah, how do we, how do we, how do we write, what, what happens there?
Yeah, I mean, essentially if, if we, yeah, I, I, and others feel free to chime in, they would, they would essentially not be able to have achieved compliance, right? I mean, if, if they're, if, if they use the full amount of CCIs and their emissions, their total emissions are still above, they, you know, they don't have enough CCIs, they've used maximum CCIs and they don't have enough compliance instruments, they would essentially be not able to achieve compliance. But you know, I would, I would point out, you know, Vice Chair, that we are doing a, a slower decline. You know, we are starting off at two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen average emissions. The, the, as the cap declines over time, you know, there, it's not asking for as much of an emissions reduction at the beginning of the program, but that is how the cap works. You know, the enforcement mechanism of the cap is you have to have the amount of instruments equivalent to your, to your emissions obligation. And you're only able to use the CCIs up to the percentage that we have in the rule.
Deputy Director Felden.
Thank you, Chair George. Yeah, uh, Nicole, to Vice Chair Barasso's point, I was curious, we talked about being able to being able to purchase CCIs, say in two thousand twenty-five for the previous period, but not being able to um, retroactively use compliance instru- instruments. Where does trading fall in that? If, if you were to reach the end of two thousand twenty-four, you know, figure out your emissions and then before the reporting of two thousand twenty-five, are you able to achieve compliance with um, trading that would apply retroactively?
Well, for compliance instruments are always banked into the future, but we, we use that term borrowing. So borrowing means you, you can't use something from a, a, from a, from a compliance period in the future. So you wouldn't be able to use like two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six or two thousand twenty-seven instruments for first control period compliance. You do have to have compliance instruments either for the current or the future. The CCIs don't have that year on them. That's why we're saying for a CCI, you can purchase that in two thousand twenty-five. I will say other people, you know, other people don't think you should be able to do that. There's sometimes comments that you don't allow for that. But I did want to flag that that is something that we did have in the rule that, that entities could do that. They could still purchase CCIs in two thousand twenty-five and actually use that for their first con- control period. You know, demonstration of compliance. So I, from a staff level, we did think that was one way in which we could give compliance flexibility to our covered fuel suppliers. Um, but of course I know there, there are other comments on that too.
Thank you.
Nicole, I would add uh, that uh, the, the trading, the, the deputy director uh, asked about, I think, would, would be an important uh, compliance avenue in this scenario that Vice Chair Barasso mentioned. They, they find themselves at the end of the compliance period, they have, the, even with the maximum amount of CCIs, that's not enough for, uh, for their, for their compliance obligation. At that point, the only mechanism for compliance is just what uh, deputy director is asking about. It was, it was trading. And at that point, that entity, it, it would, I suspect, have a very high willingness to pay for compliance instruments in the secondary market because they're facing otherwise non-compliance with the program and the enforcement mechanisms of the program are much more expensive than direct compliance with the program. So trading at that point would be the, the, really the only mechanism they could, they could avail themselves of to comply with the program.
Director Whitman.
Thank you, Chair George. Uh, so thank you, Colin, for that. Um, that is part of what I wanted to point out. But in addition, what this um, Vice Chair Barasso's question illustrates is that covered entities, covered fuel suppliers are going to need to be keeping careful track of how much fuel they are supplying for use in Oregon. And to the extent they're on a trajectory that is going to cause them problems, they're going to need to look at, you know, the alternatives of alternative compliance instruments, trading, or, and I, I want to, this to be explicit, they're going to have to raise prices um, and, and reduce demand. Um, so this is where, you know, you potentially see price impacts of the program also. And um, so all those things are possibilities.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to do, I'm going to move to the next slide and I'm just going to do a time check. I just want to double check when we were supposed to wrap up.
So we are due for a break at eleven twenty-five.
Okay, so I will, thank you, Chair George. I will, um, I'll, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the stationary sources. I do want to make sure we have time to talk about the comments we received. So I won't spend too much time. Again, um, Chair George made some excellent points. You know, the way this, the way this regulation works, the best available emission reductions approach, it um, Chair George made some excellent points. You know, the way this, the way this regulation works, the best available emission reductions approach, it applies, it's a site specific, it's kind of a technology assessment approach. It applies to, you know, industrial process emissions. It also applies to solid fuels. So if there's coal combustion, and it applies to the natural gas emissions that are not being covered by utility. So again, we have some of our stationary sources. They have direct connections to interstate pipeline. So for those sources, it also includes looking at the natural gas combustion emissions. Um, and again, it does not cover any of the fossil fuels that are covered under the other portion of the program. And I would just point out, we have, as Colin said, there's about thirteen existing sources. There would also be a process that if there were any new facilities that were expected to be permitted, that would be potentially above twenty five thousand covered, uh, tons of covered emissions. They would also be a process for new sources. Next slide, please. Um, I, I think we can skip this, just in the interest of time. And so Colin did, uh, refer to this earlier. We did want to take a step back and talk about the, you know, the multiple actions that are reducing greenhouse gas emissions across the state. So here, that sixty four million tons, you know, you hear that number a lot. It's, you know, it's the Oregon statewide sector inventory, I think is the right term. And it's basically, you know, what's Oregon's GHG emissions total? And you know, basically, we've talked a lot about twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. So just to orientate everyone, that's about sixty four million tons for those average three years. Again, CPP is being designed to cover about thirty two million tons of that, so almost fifty percent. To be clear, as we just talked about, CPP is not the only player in the game here, obviously. You know, it's all these other multiple programs that are helping to address some of these fossil fuels. And you see some of them here. We heard Clean Trucks yesterday, you heard Curry earlier this morning. I will say, I think what's important here to remember is sometimes people ask, you know, are they duplicative, are they? You know, I, I like to use the analogy that we're all rowing in the same direction. And it takes a lot to transition off of these fuels. I will say, they also have different pressure points, right? Like at CPP, we're regulating the fossil fuel suppliers, right? Yesterday, Rachel and Clean Trucks, we're talking about things like, you know, manufacturers increasing the supply. So we are talking about electrification, we are talking about infrastructure, but there's different points of emphasis in lots of these programs. And we need those different points of emphasis, right? A fossil fuel supplier doesn't have anything to do with the manufacturing of, you know, electric vehicles. So the, the state is kind of using all of these policies and all these programs, potentially, as, as Colin mentioned in the previous presentation, to kind of address these, these emissions. So again, CPP, working with these complementary policies is trying to address about thirty two million tons. Colin also alluded to the critical role that HB twenty twenty one plays for the electricity sector. That covers about seventeen million tons of the statewide inventory. We also had the new landfill regulation that EQC adopted, that covers about one point five million. And when you kind of add those all up, you get to about almost seventy nine to eighty percent of Oregon statewide emissions. There are some critical elements that are missing. You know, obviously there's emissions associated with agriculture. As many of our commissioners know, there's the issue of exported electricity, you know, electricity that's generated in the state that's exported, which we've heard in comments is an important, um, absence in HB twenty twenty one. And also there are things like, you know, high pollutant refrigerants. But we did want to give, uh, the commission a sense of, you know, how all these other pieces work together to actually target the overall statewide inventory of GHG emissions. Um, next slide, please. Okay, so coming to our actual public comments, that's where we are in what we heard. Uh, as Colin already mentioned, we've, we've had tremendous and tremendously significant and insightful public engagement and public comment. Um, for the actual rulemaking itself, we received over seven thousand six hundred comments. You know, we're going to pull out a few key themes here. Again, this in no way, shape, or can in any way capture all these seven thousand comments, but they were themes that we heard often. And one of the key themes, and you know, and I will say here, when I say that these key themes, this is something that I would say you heard almost in like over seventy percent of the comments. So over seventy percent of the comments were saying things to us like we're concerned about climate change, its impact, we're concerned about what this means for the current Oregonians and future Oregonians. We want Oregon to act now. We want Oregon to do its part to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Of course, it's a global issue, but Oregon needs to do its part. There was lots of engagement and comments on ensuring equity and CPP design and actually an overwhelming majority of comments supported not only doing these things, but other things. So I'm going to switch to the next slide. So most of our comments in these categories were asking us to do even more. So they were asking us for more emissions reductions. They were asking us, if possible, to expand the scope of emissions covered. And some of the specific examples, and Chair George, we, you mentioned this earlier. One of the things we heard a lot about was requesting for a more aggressive emissions cap decline. Again, as I, I talked about, we heard again in comments that we are starting off with a slightly higher baseline because we're using twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen. We heard a lot about the latest science and there were multiple proposals. You know, there were proposals for us to do fifty percent by twenty thirty five, ninety percent by twenty fifty. There were other proposals that asked us to go even further. So we had a lot of comments about being more aggressive on the emissions cap decline. As we've heard many times, there were, there was deep concern about the fact that the program doesn't cover natural gas power plants. Again, a lot of emphasis in the comments that HB twenty twenty one is a wonderful step forward. It's critically important because if we're going to be relying on electrification in the future, we need to ensure that the sources of electricity are also clean and renewable. But we still heard comments that even though that was, that was a step forward, there were still concerns about the fact that there is, you know, emissions that are associated with you know, power that's basically generated in Oregon but exported. And so there was, there were continued comments about the concerns that HB twenty twenty one doesn't cover everything and we need to spend more time looking into that. And then the next couple of key themes. If I go to the next slide, I'm sorry. Thank you, Stephanie. Again, as I, I refer to this, there was lots of comments on the best available emissions reduction approach. And I think, you know, Chair George, one of the things that we heard a lot about was it doesn't actually explicitly require that these sources reduce emissions. Like, it's a technology approach, it's a site specific approach. But there isn't any actual tangible way to show that we are actually asking that emissions would go down at these sources. There were also a lot of comments around timeliness of the bear process, like how long is it going to take for the sources to do these assessments? How long is it going to take for DEQ to make its decisions, et cetera? And there were also comments that some of those applicability thresholds that I mentioned earlier should actually be lower. But I do want to point out in the next slide, there were, there were other comments. I mean, this is a lot of what we heard, but we also received some other comments and you'll see that in the next slide. You know, we also heard that, you know, bears burdensome for a lot of these facilities. Again, we heard that emission reduction options aren't readily available in some of these manufacturing processes. There were concerns about affordable compliance options for our fossil fuel suppliers. And those concerns, as, as Director Whitman pointed out, they were concerns that, you know, without those types of compliance options, there could potentially be increases for fossil fuel. And what those, we're all users of these fuels. So what could be the downstream impacts for our industrial customers, our small businesses, our farms and others? And we also did have a, a couple of comments that, you know, trading is, trading is a useful tool, but trading is only as useful as much as you think it can be used. And we did have some comments that with, you know, a smaller number of potentially regulated entities, there was just comments that there may not be as much trading available. And so therefore, we need to focus on some of the other compliance flexibility mechanisms. So I think the next slide, I think that's all we have for, oh, key themes, we're still going. Okay, CCI's. Um, again, we received lots of comments on CCI's. I think some of the most important comments we got was a lot of comments about how much you should be allowed to use CCI's. Again, we've proposed that ten, fifteen, twenty. There were comments that it should be less, some comments that it should be much higher. Um, there were a lot of comments about ensuring that the projects themselves still focus on environmental justice communities. And also looking at the CCI price and how the CCI price can ensure some important elements of the program. So again, as we're talking about the fact that we need to ensure that there's a one ton of emissions reduction on average per credit issued, the CCI price needs to reflect that, needs to reflect the type of work and monitoring that needs to be done to do that. CCI price also needs to reflect the fact that there has to be capacity building for communities. Um, that's going to have to be done by the CCI third-party entities, is going to have to be robust emissions reduction monitoring. And again, we've talked about this a lot. And we spent some time thinking about this, you know, for the CCI third-party entities, whether they're subcontracting out with community-based organizations, whether they themselves are doing this work. They're going to have to act, do an active process to develop these equitable pipeline of projects. They're not going to be able to come to the table and say, oh, we have an entire plan for how we're going to do this all across Oregon, right? Like, there's going to have to be a process where they have to take the time to engage with communities and develop these projects and do the research that needs to be done. And the CCI price does actually have to reflect that type of work too. Um, and I would just say very briefly, you know, we heard a lot more about further strengthening the CCI priorities for benefits to environmental justice communities. So I touched on those priorities earlier as presented. But we continue to hear that we need to do more in the CCI priorities to strengthen the focus on environmental justice communities. There were also suggestions to expand, um, CCI projects to include sequestration. Again, in our, the way it's proposed right now, the projects have to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. But there was also support in the comments for that proposal, for limiting the CCI projects to just direct emissions reductions. I think there may not be a next slide, but.
Well, and I'd just like to, to, to share while we're on the CCI topics. I, I just want to, um, kind of maybe agree with, with one of the sentiment sentiments you shared, Nicole. One of my concerns too is that the, um, the price of the, the CCI, it, it really does need to be at a level that it can include the expected cost of administering the program. Um, and, and I'm just, I'm not sure if that's the case now, especially as you say, there's going to be these third parties. But you're going to be, the, the whole point of working with, you know, environmental justice communities is many of those are not going to be communities with high level of capacity. And so, um, the delivery and the setting up the programs and moving out these programs, and we, we also want them to, to have enough, eh, you know, administration to be able to get them out, right? I mean, the last thing we want is, is a bottleneck with projects not being able to be administered. So I just wanted to share that that was a concern of mine, that I think we, we need to be careful not to underestimate what it's going to take, the cost of getting these programs up, running and being administered quickly out in communities that, that aren't going to have a lot of, um, capacity in place.
Thank you, Chair George. So, uh, these are some of the key considerations that the staffers looking at as we're trying to determine what changes we might potentially make to the rule and present to the EQC in December. And I do want to make sure we have a chance to just throw up after I get through this, that, that slide that we promised showing the emissions cap trajectory. Um, so we are, you know, some of the areas that we're looking at carefully based on this feedback and we love feedback from the commission, obviously. Um, we, we are considering aligning that CCI price to better assure the, the program achieves these things that we just talked about. We are looking at other elements of the CCI's, not just the price. We're also looking at potentially the banking of the CCI credits. Um, again, as I mentioned, we have the usage of the CCI's, we have how long you could use them, and we actually have a purchase limit. We are looking at potentially, you know, streamlining that a little bit. Essentially keeping, you know, if we keep the percentages the same, we, we are considering potentially limiting the banking so that you could use CCI credits into the future, but you wouldn't be able to use them forever into the future. Maybe you use them for one, you know, one or two compliance periods into the future. And we also considering potentially as part of that, removing what we are calling the purchase limit. So the purchase limit was kind of this way to limit how much you could purchase. And I think we are considering that maybe the better way to do that might be with banking. So there is a, there is those four elements that work together, the CCI price, the banking, and the percentage of usage. So we are looking at all that together. Um, I think we, we, we definitely took again, the comments on strengthening the focus on benefiting environmental justice communities. So we are looking again at the CCI priorities. We're also looking at some of the CCI process to make sure that we're not creating a process that prohibits, um, you know, community groups from being involved. Yes, we want to make sure it's a robust process because it's, we want to make sure that they're doing their jobs, but we also don't want to create a process that prohibits engagement by communities. And we're also looking at better deploying the Equity Advisory Committee. So the Equity Advisory Committee in the proposed rule is that, that group that we turn to, to help figure out, you know, which CCI third-party entities should be certified. And I think one of the things we want to make sure we can do is expand the role of the, of this Equity Advisory Committee to also help us like on the work plans and the development into the future, because it's, we do see this as a more iterative process. So that is something that we're also, you know, very much considering is sort of providing more input in the process, not just at the, not just at the point of where we certify someone, but as we work with entities on their annual work plans, again, finding ways to make sure that there's community engagement. So we're looking for ways for DEQ to be more responsible on community engagement in the rule, but we're also trying to make sure that the CCI third-party entities have to take on the role of also doing community engagement and making sure the CCI price reflects that. We are looking at the best available emissions reduction approach. Thank you, Chair George, for some of the points you made. I think one of the things that we are basically considering is essentially being quite clear that the intent of best available emissions reduction is to reduce these overall emissions. So we are proposing to incorporate some specific targets for the best available emission reduction in our program review. So as we do a program review, we'll, we're going to go back and evaluate the best available emissions reduction approach. And one of the things that we would want to see is that total emissions have declined for those sources. And I think another thing we are considering is for the non-industrial manufacturing process emissions. So again, we talked about the fact that the manufacturing process emissions are very specific to, you know, specific industries. We are also considering potentially saying for the other types of emissions so that any of those fossil fuel combustion emissions that are still part of best available emissions reductions, uh, ba- basically saying that the target that we should be achieving for those emissions should be similar to the cap reduction trajectory because they're not processed emissions. So that, that's something that we are, you know, spending some time thinking about carefully. And we're also, of course, as I just talked about, trying to look very much at the, the actual cap reductions, emissions trajectory. Um, and we can go to the next slide to show the cap reduction trajectory. But I, I did want to pause there. I know those, those are some areas that we are doing some deep thinking and some things we might be changing. Colin or Director Whitman, if you would like to add anything, feel free, and then we can talk about the emissions cap. But there, there's a lot of thinking going on, so I don't want to pretend that, you know, that, that is everything. But those are some of the areas that we're doing some deep thinking as we're preparing, um, for the next iteration at the December meeting.
Vice Chair Brasso.
There's a lot there. Um, thank you, Nicole. Um, thank you, um, Colin, and, and this tremendous amount of work here. Um, it's hard to know where to start. Um, maybe just because this slide is up here. I, I, for one, I appreciate seeing this and thinking through the comments and, and understanding there's, there's a lot of moving pieces within the program, but this is one area where certainty can be given from a long-term horizon. I am, I, I would like to see a proposal that does have the, the more aggressive end target in part because it allows us to think more thoughtfully and, and have that. I'd say collectively, us, meaning industry, the regulated parties, others, to know where we are going and have that certainty well in advance of, 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 of where we're starting. And, and, and I acknowledge that science is always changing, actions within the federal government are changing, within our neighboring states are changing, and that doesn't mean things can't, things can't be updated for out years. But I know that that sort of certainty is important as folks are making ten, fifteen-year investments and making those investment decisions. On the CCI's, um, I, as I hear everything that is, that is spoken to there, I, I can't help but and I mean this in the, but fear that, and ask this question, are we trying to be too much there? Um, and, and so I, I, I do really want us to be thoughtful about is, do you put everything in that singular CCI price and expect that to drive the entirety of what you just shared? You're trying to do, or is there a place to go to the legislature and say, we're doing direct emissions reductions here within this program, but it requires this other work? I, I just, I, 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 I fear that, um, in trying to put too much into the CCI's that we do, I mean, this is a regulatory program and having that, assuring those emissions reductions within the CCI's are lining up with the emissions that we are allowing, uh, regulated entities to produce is really important. And, and yet I know that price is one tool that can drive that. And, and I, and I do have, I do have concerns about what that movement of price could look like and how you could structure that in a way that folks have certainty. So it's, it's, I'm just, I'm, as I'm hearing everything now, I'm just thinking about, is there, is there a role to say this is what CCI's are doing? And when we talk about some of the capacity building that's going to be necessary, is there, how, how can you, um, and not to sidle, but how can you, how can you assure the CSI's are doing what they're doing and give folks some certainty? So I'm just trying to think, is there, is there something else there? Um, when it comes to, I'm just running because I've got the moment and I know we're behind time, so I'm just going to let, throw a couple more things out there. When it comes to the bear approach, I agree with what, uh, I would like to understand what a, an approach looks like as Commissioner, as Chair George had spoken to around having that incentive for bear entities to reduce. And yet, you know, I do, I do believe that there are probably a good chunk of those entities where their process emissions have best available emissions reductions that we can see and compare nationally, internationally, and, and have approaches that we know that they can take to reduce their emissions. have best available emissions reductions that we can see and compare nationally, internationally, and and have approaches that we know that they can take to reduce their emissions. And yet there are going to be some facilities that are at the bleeding edge of what they're doing. And it's really about those instances and those facilities that I wonder what is the incentive for them when they may be at the bleeding edge of this, what is the thing that gives them the incentive to continue exploring um creating um, uh, you know, uh, processes and modifications to emissions reductions? So I'm just trying to think, is there, is there, is there a way to parse that out? Where you do have these facilities that you know are going to be at the bleeding edge of what they're doing? And what is, what what do we have to maintain the incentive there, recognizing some of these other facilities? We 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 know what the, what the bear approaches are, and that's going to move them along, just in in taking that approach. Um, I will stop there. I'm sure there's a couple of things I forgot, but I'll stop. Thank you.
Well, I know we have a couple more commissioners who want to provide some comment. So um unless folks see this differently, I'm going to, going to recommend we go ahead and let Commissioner Kyle and Commissioner um Slusser share their thoughts, and then we can, you know, respond as 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 appropriate. Commissioner Kyle.
Thank you, and I'll try to keep it uh brief. But uh given the latest IPC reports and, you know, COP twenty-one, I personally am more in favor of a more aggressive uh emission cap um in order to make sure that Oregon does do its part to get the emissions where they need to be to try to reduce the global temperatures. I just wanted to put that out there. The other comment that I'll focus on is the priorities for the community climate investments. Um, I think it's really important that we do make sure that we're including climate vulnerable communities, not just uh communities based on uh socio-demographic principles, so those communities that are either coastal or floodplain and are more vulnerable to extreme flooding events, which are predicted to increase, as well as some of our communities that might be more drought stressed or wildfire um uh vulnerable as also recipients of that investment to make sure that we're actually trying to offset um the impacts from the climate change that this whole uh rulemaking is directed towards. So I just think it's really important that um we make sure that those CCIs are resulting in tangible greenhouse gas emissions, resilience in communities uh that are going to be vulnerable to these extreme benefits, and then ideally also aligned with communities, environmental justice communities that would benefit, uh have co-benefits by the reduction from, you know, the air pollutants or uh ecological service restoration that would improve uh some of that green infrastructure. So I just, I know there's a lot of conversation about this, and this is an amazing opportunity to increase equity across the state. Um, but I think it's important that we make sure that we keep those alignments in place with uh extreme weather events.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Hi, thank you. I will also try to keep my comments brief. Um, first, I want to note that I'm new to the EQC, so I haven't had a chance to review the record yet. So just please take my comments with um a little grain of salt. Uh, first, I'm supportive of science-backed targets. So I think that it makes more sense, um, as Commissioner Kyle noted, to set a more aggressive um target and cap trajectory. Um, I think that the ninety by, ninety percent by twenty fifty cap trajectory based on this slide on the screen now seems much more reasonable and more on track with the best available science. Um, second, I I support setting a CCI price at a level that's necessary to achieve emissions reductions and uh that recognizes the administrative costs and other implementation costs associated with these projects. So I I think that it's good that the agency is considering um alternative ways of structuring that CCI price. And then finally, um for bear, for the bear sources, I agree that that there should be some parameters um or incentives to encourage these facilities to actually invest in new technologies and infrastructure to reduce emissions. And so I support um any approach that would set some sort of emissions-based target or goal or or something that's more finite than just, you know, do what you can. Um, and I also would be supportive of an approach that would allow those facilities to invest in CCIs as a way of um showing compliance if they are, if technologies aren't available for them to otherwise reduce their emissions. Thanks.
Thank you. I think um that was a lot of, you know, sharing, sharing people's perspectives and what they'd like to see. Uh, either Colin or um Nicole or Richard, do you have any specific questions about that? Director Whitman.
So thank you, Chair George. Um, it's very useful to get, get this uh tentative feedback from commissioners as we work to finalize uh what we're going to bring you in mid-December. So I think we've, we've heard direction on a number of fronts. I want to, I want to address one thing in a little bit more detail than we've talked about yet and and kind of tie together the, what you just saw in terms of the presentation on the Climate Protection Program with with what you saw right before it in the presentation on the Clean Fuels Program. When you step back um and think about the Climate Protection Program, we're really focused on two area, two segments of fossil fuels, transportation fuels, and then uh natural gas and that use of natural gas in homes and commercial buildings and industry. On the transportation fuel side, the presentation you saw from the Clean Fuels Program essentially shows a pathway to get us to about a forty-five, fifty percent reduction in uh greenhouse gas emissions just through the work of uh the Clean Fuels Program and associated programs by by twenty thirty-five. So I think we, the department is feeling pretty confident on the transportation fuel side that we can get to um reductions at the levels that we're trying to get through to, through the um Climate Protection Program without significant price impacts. And frankly, that um, that bottom line has been somewhat corroborated by some uh information uh in a study that's been put together actually by um folks in the business community and submitted as part of the record that you'll be reviewing. Where we have more concern about price impacts is in the natural gas arena and um probably particularly for industrial use of natural gas. And there, you know, we are going to need, um, we don't have all the tools that we have for transportation fuels. We don't have clean cars, we don't have clean fuel, the the Clean Fuels Program. So um, we do think we can get there, but there is, there is more risk on the price increase side for natural gas. And so Commissioner Barasso, this also gets to your point about the community climate investment uh part of this program. Having a strong community climate investment component of the CPP in, is a way of getting particularly resi- um, uh households um, either off of natural gas or onto renewable natural gas or on the green hydrogen or whatever, is going to be really important in terms of reducing demand for natural gas and protecting those communities from potential price increases. So um the CCI part of the program is is an important tool for that. There are other programs that we're going to be leaning on to help reduce that demand for natural gas also. Um, uh, energy efficiency programs, um, uh, local programs uh to to help households get off of natural gas also uh or onto renewable natural gas. All of those things are going to be important. But um, big picture, I think, uh, transport, the transportation side is looking, with all the tools we have, is looking um doable. The the natural gas side, it it's um, it's more challenging, and particularly after twenty thirty-five, um, it it gets more challenging. So we'll be providing you more information in the coming month in the report uh that's coming to the commission. Um, and in the record, there's also a lot of information on this. But I just wanted to give that kind of high-level uh overview of and where we're seeing things at this point in terms of uh the CPP and how it fits together with all these other programs.
Yeah, thank you for that, uh Director Whitman. I I did kind of want to note that I think, um, again, another comment that we really heard some folk expressed very serious concerns about was the nat- natural gas uh power plants. And um, and that there, eh, with those not, as as you say, you, you keep believing they do not have the regulatory tools to handle that now. But as as I understand it, that leaves quite a significant uh remainder, that leaves quite a significant um piece of emissions uh that when we look at our goals, um, we we would rather address that than not, for sure. And so um my understanding is that there's some discussion in the legislature about um possible ways to address this. I don't think there's probably too much we can say about that now, but I I didn't want to leave the topic without bringing it up because it is certainly something we heard a great deal about from the public.
Yes, thank you, Chair George. If I could speak to that for a moment, um, I want to be really clear for the record that um the department does believe that we do not have the authority to include under the cap here greenhouse gas emissions from power plants in Oregon, whether that's power plants that are producing for in-state use of electricity or power plants that are exporting their power. Um, and there are a couple of reasons for that. They have to do with the uh authority that the legislature has given to, actually, our Oregon Department of Energy and um uh provisions um around a a CO2 standard for power plants along with legislation that um provides the owners and operators of those power plants say no moving the goalposts um protection, uh essentially protection from later adopted standards. So we acknowledge that um greenhouse gas emissions from electric generation is a significant issue. The legislature has taken a substantial step in addressing those emissions through House Bill twenty twenty-one, the hundred percent clean electricity bill that um requires our utilities to get to a hundred percent renewable electricity in Oregon by twenty forty. Um, that addresses the the generation that is for um consumption within Oregon. But it, what it leaves is the generation of electricity that's exported out of state. And there, um, I think we are going to need some help from our legislature to address this issue. We have started conversations with our sister agency, the Oregon Department of Energy, and some legislators around this. And I think it's something that there is legislative interest in addressing. And um, I again want to acknowledge that that's uh, that if if we're going to have a comprehensive approach to greenhouse gas reduction in Oregon, that is one of the gaps that still needs to be filled. Um, that said, uh, you know, the the Climate Protection Program covers about fifty percent of greenhouse gas emissions. And when you put it together with House Bill twenty twenty-one and a few other pieces, again, as Colin noted earlier, we get up to about eighty percent of our state's greenhouse gas emissions being covered under one or other of these programs. Um, so I know that's a lot uh that we've, we've thrown at you today, but I I hope this uh kind of sets the stage for um December and uh the rules that we're going to be bringing to you for your consideration then.
Okay, thank you. And and again, I guess, just to to be very clear, because I do, it's a time that that staff does have to know our expectations. I guess I want to go on the record as well as with my fellow commissioners as being interested in seeing um the more um aggressive reduction targets uh in the final uh proposal. So with that, however, I think we do need to move on. And so uh we are due for a short break, and I think we need to have compassion on everyone in the audience and go ahead and have that. I have eleven forty-nine right now. Uh, how about, folks, can you be back at noon? All right, hearing no objections, we'll see you back here at noon.
Chair George, over the break, I will uh pause the recording and we will reconvene at noon. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you. All right, and just to to check, Commissioner Kyle, are you with us?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, Director, we are ready to hear your report.
All right, good afternoon, Chair George Commissioners. Um, Richard Whitman, uh, DEQ Director for the record. I am going to uh start out today by reporting on really significant uh positive development that has occurred in our Northwest region that um, I I want to acknowledge and specifically call out. And um, I see Nina Deconseigny, our Northwest Region Administrator, has joined us. And I believe a number of others have have joined as well, uh, DEQ staff and also from the Oregon Department of Justice. So this is about a um, the largest uh in terms of dollar amount um cleanup project under the state cleanup program in the history of Oregon. And uh this is the Scopus Bay Armstrong Kaiser site. And um, that site was contaminated with arsenic and dioxin furons uh because of uh industrial activity there over the years. And DEQ's been working uh with Armstrong Owens and Kaiser since the early two thousands on the cleanup of this project. And in two thousand and ten, we signed a voluntary cleanup agreement with those three parties to clean up this site. Unfortunately, uh then in two thousand and sixteen, uh Kaiser filed bankruptcy in federal court, which kind of threw everything up in the air in terms of this project. But thanks to some great work uh by our lawyers and by our staff, um, we've worked through that bankruptcy proceeding and uh attained a um sixty-seven million dollar uh cash settlement with Kaiser coming out of the bankruptcy as well as another ten million dollars uh agreed to by Armstrong and Owens Corning for the cleanup. So uh about a month ago, we actually received the the funds for this um, and are now ready to proceed with where we had kind of stopped uh when things went sideways with Kaiser in twenty sixteen. So next steps are to um complete uh the investigation of the site and develop a final cleanup plan uh to really um, uh, take care of the very significant threats to not only public health, but uh our environment uh in this area so that the area is safe for people and for for wildlife as well. So I want to call out a few people specifically um who have just spent countless hours on this. First of all, Kevin Perret, our Northwest Region Cleanup Manager, uh Sarah Greenfield, uh, the Northwest Region Project Manager on this site, and Gary Vrooman, um, of course, your uh contact counsel, but also uh the lead DOJ attorney on this uh project. Also, Matty Novick, um, who until about a year ago was um uh Northwest Region Cleanup Manager, toxicologist, and is now with EPA Region Ten. Um, so this team has um really been instrumental in getting to this great result, and I I want to acknowledge them. I think they're all here virtually today. So thank you uh so much, everybody, for your work on this. Um, it's, it's an incredible result, not just for DEQ, but for the community, uh for Oregon and um everybody who treasures uh that it it's really is a special part of the state if you haven't been there before. So thank you so much.
I just want to reiterate all the thanks from the EQC as well. This is quite literally huge, and it's going to enable uh so much good work to happen. And so really, Nina, Gary, the whole team, thank you very, very much. This is is really going to enable some some important heal- thank you very, very much. This is really going to enable some important healing to occur. So we really celebrate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair George, and thank you, Nina, and your team.
Thank you for letting us come to the commission and be recognized in front of our governing board, Chair George, Director Whitman.
All right, Chair George, I want to transition to thanking some other folks at DEQ. And I am going to talk about a couple of parts of the written director's report. And the director's report really starts out talking about work that we're currently doing within DEQ around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this is work that many organizations are spending a lot of, devoting a lot of attention to, finally. And that's true here at DEQ as well. But it's hard to even describe in a paragraph the various moving parts of this work within DEQ. But that work really has been led by our DEI restructuring team. And they are just about, they are now in the process of handing off their leadership to our new permanent DEI council that we reported on to the commission at our last meeting. So I just, I want to acknowledge the work that the restructuring team did in over the last almost two years now in getting us to the point where we are really have reached a level of engagement in this work that I'm starting to feel good about in the organization. So thank you all so much. There are a couple of other groups that haven't been recognized before for their assistance in this really important effort. And one of those is a group that works on actually the selection of our DEI council, the new permanent body that's leading that work. And those individuals include your very own commission staffer, Stephanie Caldera, Juan Kim, Zach Mandera, Nicole Singh, whom you heard from a little bit earlier this morning, and Jamila Thompson. Also, we're part of that group that led a open, transparent application process that led to the selection of our new DEI council, which is meeting tomorrow, by the way. And then another part of this work has been to bring in expertise from outside of the agency because we're not experts on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We hope to become more expert in that work, but we're not. And so getting that outside help has been an important part of this effort as well. And we had another team working on the selection of consultants to help with that. And those individuals included Blair Adams, Dana Bailey, Brian Bowling, our CSD Administrator, Stephanie Brandon, Marie, Helen Diodati, Lydia Eimer, our Land Quality Administrator, and Ferris, Shemal Karan, and Tempest Roberts, and Lisa Tran. So thank you to that group also for their help on this work. And then finally, just to note that our DEI coordinator, Natalie Nava, is starting in about three weeks now, and we're looking forward to having her on board. She's got a great background. We'll get her introduced to the commission also. But in the written director's report, I acknowledge the group that helped with the recruitment of our DEI coordinator, and I inadvertently left somebody out of that list. So I want to call out Leela Yellet Steady, who's our Public Records Lead person in the agency, was also a part of that effort. She's also on the DEI council. So thank you, Leela, for everything you do on DEI. So again, there are a lot of moving parts to the DEI effort in the agency. You're going to be hearing more about this regularly from me in commission meetings, but there's really a lot of good energy around this work at DEQ right now. And I'm so inspired by the people who are helping with this within the agency. Any commission questions about any of that?
Well, more comment, I just, again, I want to raise my hands in salute and thanks to all the people doing this work. It is critically important. I think you've heard that from the commission before. And I think we're just going to remain eager to hear about this work underway at the department and provide whatever support we can to advancing these goals. So that's the only thing I have to share at this time. Commissioners, any further? Thanks.
Thank you, Chair George. So I am going to touch on one other part of the written report with regard to things that are going on here inside the agency. You know, we've all been living through the COVID pandemic for almost two years now. And some of us have had to continue to come to a work location, our vehicle inspection program inspectors have been out there, you know, every day inspecting cars. Our lab staff have been at the lab collecting samples, analyzing samples, writing reports. You know, we have accounting staff, HR staff, who have continued to come into the office. So but for many of us, we have been working remotely now for almost two years. On or about, unless things change, January 1st, we will be reopening our doors to the public. And that doesn't mean that staff who are working remotely will necessarily all be back in the office at once. We likely are going to move to some form of hybrid work for people who are able to do more remote work. And we are in the process of, there are two things going on related to that. One is we are doing a survey of our staff and managers. We're talking with our union to really get input about what people want and what they've learned from the experience of the last couple of years. And secondly, I'm participating along with other agency directors in a cross-agency effort with our Department of Administrative Services, which is adopting guidance for agencies on what is, what the bounds are of what's going to be allowed for the state in terms of a hybrid work environment. So we're in the middle of that process right now. There'll be more to come here probably at the January EQC meeting. But I do expect we will slowly be moving back towards some form of hybrid work in the agency. All the details of exactly what that looks like still to come. And we want to make sure that it is a collaborative process with our workforce, with our managers. And we also need to work within the bounds of what the state enterprise will let us do. So we're navigate, we're in the middle of navigating that right now also, along with other things going on. So that's really just a report out to you so that you're aware that that work is going on in the agency. I'm going to turn to talk about a couple of things going on externally now. I am going to touch on environmental justice in a moment here because there's a lot going on there. But before I do that, a couple of late-breaking things going on here actually today. One, EPA has announced this morning that it is going to be issuing a new proposed rule defining, redefining waters of the United States or WOTUS, as some of you have heard. And this has been an area of great controversy and a lot of fluidity over the last six years. And at a really high level where EPA appears to be headed is a new rule going back to essentially the working definition that was used in 2015 before the Obama administration WOTUS rule was adopted. So we'll report on, we'll report more details to you all when we have them. Probably in January sometime, I'm sure there'll be a robust national discussion about these issues. I don't see this as having a lot of direct effect in Oregon on the ground because of our state water quality laws, broad applicability to, you know, a really wide range of water bodies that frankly has been broader than the federal definition for quite some time. So that's one thing going on. The other is with regard to a particular facility, the Jordan Cove LNG liquefied natural gas export facility down in Coos Bay. So just a little bit of a refresher on this, you know, we did have a court opinion. We've had several decisions with regard to Jordan Cove. The bottom line has been that the Pembina does not have a required coastal zone consistency determination from our sister agency, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And they also do not have a water quality certification that's required from DEQ in order to fully develop the project. What they do have is a license from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which includes bear with me, both an authorization to begin developing the project and conditions on that on the FERC license that require Pembina to get the coastal zone consistency determination and DEQ's water quality certification. So there has been some concern that the developers of the project could actually go forward with some on-the-ground activities under the FERC authorization. And that all continues to get litigated back in federal circuit court in the District of Columbia Circuit. So the DC Circuit Court has just remanded the case that was pending before then back to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission asking FERC whether they wish to stay their authorization for the project. So all this is to say essentially, you know, that FERC license is still out there. The project is not totally dead, to use a technical term. And there'll be more proceedings to figure out whether this really has come to an end or not. And we'll report on this to the commission going forward. But I want it, there'll probably be some media coverage over this. And I wanted the commission to be aware that it's going on. Any questions about that before I move on?
No.
Okay. So let me go on to talk at a high level about environmental justice. So you know, many environmental programs in our nation have been designed in ways that do not look carefully at what localized impacts of regulatory decisions are on nearby communities, whether that's in the air quality arena, water quality arena, or cleanup or other areas. And so there is growing recognition of this gap in our environmental programs and a growing desire to be much more intentional and to take much more care about localized impacts of our programs. And that's happening on the federal level with the Biden administration, with Administrator Reagan for the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. It's also happened with Congress in the infrastructure bill that was just passed by Congress. There is some fairly significant funding to support environmental justice work both at the state level and at the community level. And so we are expecting some resources to be able to do this work that we have not had previously, which is great. Also, at the state level, as pointed out in the written director's report, there are a couple of pieces of legislation that were passed by the Oregon Legislature in the 2021 session that haven't frankly gotten a lot of attention yet, but which I think are actually very significant. One of them is a requirement for a racial equity impact statement for proposed changes to agency budgets and proposed legislative concepts that we are in the middle of conversations with the racial justice council right now about how to implement that law as we go into the next long legislative session that is going to require us to look at these issues around localized impacts on particularly on communities of color. But I will just speaking for myself, although the legislation focuses on racial equity, I think we are, for Oregon DEQ, likely to look at that a little bit more broadly so that we encompass not only racial equity, but equity more, equity broadly on all sorts of communities. And then there also was legislation passed in the last session that requires a similar sort of analysis on proposed rules at the time the notice of rulemaking is filed. And so we are awaiting some guidance from the Oregon Department of Justice on implementation of that legislation. But again, we're taking that legislative requirement seriously and already starting to think about what sort of analysis do we need to do? What sort of analysis can we do? Even in the near term, recognizing that it is going to take a little while before we have all the tools that we really want and need to do this sort of analysis of disparate impacts. So a lot happening in the environmental justice field and in a good way. And you'll be hearing much more about this, I think, as part of our regular work in the agency. Okay. A few other things of note, and then I think I can catch us up a little bit. On a sad note, Lorianne is retiring from DEQ effective the end of this calendar year. Lori was our implementation administrator and then also served as the acting Eastern Region Administrator. I have decided not to refill that position. We, Lori got a lot of the work done that we wanted to have done in terms of better integration of our headquarters and regional offices. And it has become more of an expectation of both our headquarters administrators and our regional administrators that they be working closely together. And the specifics of how they work together has gotten more mature in the agency, thanks to Lorianne's work, thanks to Deputy Director Leah Felden, thanks to our administrators who have all been engaged in that effort over the last five years. So I think the time, the need for that position has more or less passed, although we'll continue to keep an eye on the coordination issues. And frankly, that position, since it was never approved as part of our budget and was something that we had to fund through savings from other programs, has been a bit of a drain on the rest of the agency. So so I'm not refilling the position at this point. On a good news front, we have hired a permanent Eastern Region Administrator, and you have met her before, Shannon Davis, who has been a manager with the EQ I think, five or six years now with our materials management program, came to us from Region 9 EPA, and before that was the an administrator for the Arizona Department of Environmental Protection. So Shannon's a great person. She has a lot of family roots in eastern Washington. She gets the east side culture and I think is a good people person. is a good people person, a good, somebody who is all about partnerships and and collaboration. So I think she'll be a really fantastic addition to our leadership team as well as a great Eastern Region Administrator. Okay. I think the only other thing I'm gonna call out that's not in the, that is in the written report is some of the work we're doing on our onsite programs. So again, the legislature approved two pots of money for us to help with failing set onsite septic systems, both residential and, and non-residential. And so Craft Three has been awarded a contract to administer the first piece of funding for that and they're back up and running in, in the state. And then longer term, we also received an appropriation of $15 million from the legislature to help subsidize repair, replacement of failing onsite systems. And we're just starting our request for information process where we are soliciting ideas mainly from local government counties and districts on best ways to administer those dollars. That'll be followed by an RFP that will be issuing this spring to actually enter into agreements. Again, probably mainly with local governments to actually administer those dollars and get them out the door. So we're excited. That's a tool we've never had before, frankly. Government puts a lot of money into wastewater systems for government entities, but has never been a big investor in failing septic systems. And so it's been a real gap for our water quality program. And it's great to see Oregon stepping up and starting to fill that gap with these programs. And we hope to really demonstrate some successful approaches here that can be models for continued funding of this. Particularly in the areas of the state where we do have groundwater quality problems. So, so the Shute County, some places on the coast, Ten Mile Lakes, the even the lower Umatilla groundwater management area, septic systems in that area are part of the problem. So starting to have some tools to address this is, is wonderful. And we're very appreciative of the legislative support for it. I think with that, I am gonna end there in terms of the director's support. If you have any questions about either the written report or anything else, I'm happy to give it a try to answer them.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions about, about the report or something that the director might be able to, to answer for us now? Not seeing any. Okay. Well, our last agenda item for the day is the informational commissioner reports. And since we're down to, to three commissioners and one of them being brand new, that shouldn't take terribly long. I, I will go ahead and start. And honestly, this, this time I don't think I have too much to share, really other than the, the work that we're doing right here and updates with staff. Probably most of my, my calls and meetings have been kind of leading up and preparing to with the, the forestry MOA or MOU. And so, you know, related to that, and we spent quite a bit of time on that earlier in the meeting. So I don't have too much to share. I did mention earlier that we will want to revisit kind of who on the EQC is covering what in terms of other obligations or efforts to, to be in communication and have liaisons with partner agencies. So we'll certainly do that once Greg and Amy have had a chance to, to get more oriented. And just for your information, Amy, you know, this typically is a time where we just share anything that we have been doing out in the outside world and in our work that might be of interest or have, you know, real relevance to the work that we do here together. And you'll certainly notice that your inbox will be filling up very quickly. There's often lots of invitations to, to talk or to zoom or to get input on things. And just where we think that's relevant or, or good for other people to be aware of, we, we share at this time. So Commissioner Kyle, do you have anything for us?
I can share. So I'm a liaison between the commission and OWEB. And about three weeks ago, we did have an OWEB board meeting and kind of the three things that I think are, are relevant to share with the commission is the first one was really the post-fire recovery funding. So OWEB's really playing a pivotable role in House Bill 5006 that appropriated $26 million in natural and cultural resource restoration. And $19.75 million was voted in to restoration grants. So it's kind of through three mechanisms. One is for riparian upland restoration. One is for, one group is for floodplain restoration. And then the third was fun grants towards Eugene Water and Electric Board to reduce post-fire risks in that watershed, which is also serving as a drinking water source. So I think that's something that's really positive. OWEB does have really excellent grant mechanisms and infrastructure. So it's really using that agency, the infrastructure that they have for their grant agencies to push this money out into the communities. So I think that's something that's really nice. I also really want to share and encourage everybody to go look at OWEB's telling the restoration stories. So, so often we get focused on all the negative aspects. But OWEB and serving on the OWEB board is, is a lot of fun because you actually get to put money into restore, restoring. And so this is a small program, but there's nine of these restoration stories now that have been created. And the latest one was on Horse Tail Creek. But it really is a tool for communicating the outcomes of the restoration efforts that OWEB is doing. So there's videos, there's photographs, there's maps. It really is trying to emphasize the metrics that matter for restoration. So things like improving fish passage. There's usually always evidence of increased salmonid activity and reds, which is really lovely to see and increased biodiversity levels. So they're always, they're always a fun part of the agenda. And when you need a pickup, I highly recommend it. So it's fun. And then the last piece is, as all the agencies are, so I think DEQ is doing this as well, but OWEB is contributing to the Oregon Biennial Report. And so the different committees within OWEB, and I'm part of monitoring committees and subcommittees and water quality committees. But within this is really trying to put forth a vision. And so some of the elements that I thought that OWEB is putting forth with regards to this document to serve as a vision are really relevant to EQC and what we're trying to do as well, which is really to kind of highlight the importance of cool, clean, plentiful water, healthy forests and riparian and estuaries. It's also about the impacts of restoration projects go beyond just environmental components, but it also includes socio-economic benefits from landscape restoration. So it really is kind of hitting a triple bottom line of sustainability. The importance of integrating DEI into all of OWEB's operations and grant programs. The need to position to address new challenges posed by climate change and wildfires is two pieces that are really being called out. And then the piece that really speaks to all of us is the ability and the need to work across agencies so that we do have these multi-level interventions. But being put forth, because if we can align and coordinate, we will get further, farther faster. So those were the big three take homes from, from October. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Director.
Thank you Chair George. I do have one other item for commissioners, which is dates for 2022. And I'm going to do a share screen here, I hope. Stephanie, I hope I can do that. Okay.
I believe you can, Director Whitman.
So are you all seeing this? I hope.
Yes.
So two things. First of all, for the December 16 meeting, this is the meeting where we are going to be bringing the proposed climate protection program rules to the commission for your consideration. We have not set a time yet. I think we were leaning toward the morning of the 16th. But I want to do, we'll, we'll check in by email with Commissioner Addington. But I want to do a quick check with you all to see if the morning of the 16th works for you all.
It works for me and it's better than the afternoon, but I could make both work.
Okay.
That works for me as well.
Okay. And we'll also check with Commissioner Vice Chair Barasso to make sure. I think he had indicated earlier that he could make himself available. So expect that we'll be starting in the morning of the 16th, probably nine o'clock. But we're also trying to gauge how much time it's going to take to go through that particular item. And as you kind of saw this morning, there's a lot there to work through. Okay. Then for 2022, and you may you all may need more time to look at this more carefully, but I again want to put tentative proposed dates out for commission meetings in 2022. Again, we're on a once every two month schedule roughly. And we're proposing that the first, we're going to give you a break in January.
We'll take it.
And start up early in February. There is, it does overlap a little bit with legislative session, but I think it's early enough in the legislative session that we can make that work for us if it works for you all. These are all Thursday, Friday dates. So again, for Commissioner Addington and Commissioner Schlesser, we haven't really talked with you about whether Thursday, Fridays are good days for you. And I'm gonna pause because Commissioner Kyle answered, hand up.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Kyle.
I did get my teaching schedule for winter term and I do teach Thursdays at 4:00 PM. So I would just need to make sure that things ended earlier on Thursdays, but that will be for the February 3rd and March 31st.
So again, we will distribute these dates by email, but I think I'm looking for some response on this relatively soon so that we can really start to plan out our schedule for the year. Part of this is, you know, we're also going to be thinking about at some point, do we go back to in-person meetings? And if so, under what circumstances? And obviously we'll want to talk about allowing hybrid, potentially hybrid alternatives for better alternatives for people to continue to participate virtually if they need or want to. So look for us to have that conversation also. Certainly by the time of the February meeting, if not doing a poll of you all before then.
Okay, just for me, the dates as proposed, I'll, I'll work fine right now. So go ahead and, and mark that down for me.
Okay.
Yeah, as, as of right now, all of those states look fine for me as well.
Okay. And Commissioner Kyle, I heard what you said about a commitment regularly at four o'clock on Thursdays.
Only for the February and March. I don't know.
Okay. 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 Thank you Chair George for indulging me with that, but I wanted to try to get, help move us toward closure on those dates. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Sometimes just doing it in the moment is the fastest way to get it done. All right. Well, this has been a, a good meeting. A lot of good work has occurred. But unless we have other business, Director or Stephanie, I think we have come to the close of this meeting. And I think we've lost voting quorum. So it's probably about time. So barring any very serious objection, I will call the meeting to a close at 12:41 PM. I want to thank everyone for joining us throughout this meeting and look forward to keeping up the good work. Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you Chair George. At this time, we will stop the recording and close our Zoom room. Thank you all for joining us today.
Thank you.